Good evening. Welcome to the Hingham School Committee meeting for Tuesday, May 7th. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:30. I'm Edward Schreier, and as a senior member of the school committee, it is our tradition for that person to chair the start of the meeting as we transition to next year's school Before we get to tonight's business, I want to note the passing of a member of our student body. Andrew Warhoff Tig. On behalf of the entire Hingham school family, we offer our heartfelt condolences and prayers to Andrew's family. To the Chafteils and the Warhoff Tigs, to his parents, Elise and Jeremy, and to his sibs, Rachel and Ethan. I'd ask you to poise with me for a moment of silence. A few moments ago, our town clerk, Eileen McCracken, swore in our two new members. Let's see if Michael can swing this around. To Carrie Nie. And Libby Lewicki. We also want to thank our two most recent former members, Cynthia Gelco and Eileen Kellin, who for three years have devoted contributions. Thank you to both for a job well done. Now to new business. We will elect a new chair by a roll call vote. At which point she and I will simply switch seats now that my 15 minutes of fame has expired, and she will officiate at the election of the vice chair and secretary. Is there a question at this point?
Yes, Dr. Schreier, thank you. I do, first, I just wanted to thank everyone who stepped up to run for the leadership positions for the school committee. I was a little surprised when I saw the ballot to see that there was only one candidate per role, and I was wondering if somebody who was more experienced on the school committee could kind of clarify how that came to be. Just with an election, I expected more than one person.
Well, it's a self-appointed, self-nomination process, and over my experience, what the eight years, we've had as many as three competing for positions and as few as one. So it's not unusual.
Okay. I guess my concern with this one is, especially with last year's chair moving into the vice chair position after her term had expired, and I know she's going to do an excellent job, it's not that. It's more that term limits kind of exist for a reason, and periodic leadership change is kind of healthy. I was doing a little research to prepare for this meeting and found an article that put it really succinctly. It said, "Board chair term limits reduce the likelihood that a few individuals will dominate board discussions and decisions. They provide periodic injections of new energy and ideas, and they help prevent board chair to burn out," and I think that's all really important. And in this case, we have Liza, who really threw her heart and soul into the chair position and moving over to the vice chair, and I guess I'm a little concerned that that won't give Michelle the space she will need to lead, because everyone's in the habit of addressing Liza as the chair. So I just wanted to bring up that concern and just kind of ask that the new leadership team and then we as a group kind of be cognizant of that dynamic.
I don't know how to answer that.
Can I comment?
Absolutely.
This is self-nomination. I had no intention of moving forward prior to the election. I had the confidence that people on the committee had the experience of being an officer. After the election, we are allowed to talk to two people under open meeting law. I had people ask me to do this because of the knowledge of how the committee operates and in particular, interactions with the town. And so, it was not of my own initiative, it was at the request of my colleagues, and that's the only reason that I put my name forward. Anyone else could have put their name forward, and everyone was free to. This policy and the way we have the election has been followed for many, many, many years as the existing committee went over it. We've gone over it every year, it's in our policies. We went over it again at our last meeting, April 23rd. It's in our minutes that we're going to be looking at tonight. That's a very public, transparent process, and everyone had the opportunity. Everyone met the deadline, requested for putting their name in at the ballot. The staff delivered the ballot on the date they were supposed to. So everyone had the opportunity. Anyone can put their name forward. That's the way it happened.
That's great, and thank you for doing that. I know you'll be a great resource for Michelle.
That's, my only intention is to be a resource.
Carrie, the only thing that I would add on the topic is, and you probably don't know this, but the logical person to be stepping up in this next year or two for the chair vice chair would be myself, but just because of a personal family issue, it's just not possible. So I just can't.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'll just add, I was going to say this afterwards, but I just was going to say, if elected chair, that to me, the chair, vice chair, and the secretary, I mean, we're just simply the facilitators and overseeing the meetings. We're not the boss, we don't run the school committee. So that's my intention, that we just preside over these meetings, take the minutes, step in if somebody can't be here, and that's simply the, that's the rule. We're all here for the same reason, to support a safe environment and a good learning environment for our students and our faculty. And my ask would just be that every time we come to a meeting, everybody remember that that's what we're all here for. We all might have different opinions about how to get there and how we're going to get there, but at the end of the day, that's what we're all here for, every single one of us. And there's plenty of opportunities to lead, and there are plenty of opportunities to tell me I'm doing something wrong or incorrect or differently. So I mean, I want this to truly be that, that this is a committee, and we'll have different opinions, but in the end, we're all a body that is out there for the safety and security and support of our students and our teachers.
Great. That's why you're going to make a great chair, I think.
Thank you, Michelle. We have one nominee for chair, so I would look for, I would ask for a motion to confirm the nomination of Michelle Eyre for chairman of the Hingham School Committee for year 2018-2019.
I'll make a motion for Michelle Eyre to serve as chair.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? This is a roll call vote, and your choices on a roll call are aye, nay, or abstain. So since Carrie, you're first in line, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Hellos?
Aye.
Libby? Michelle?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you. Oh, now we have to switch, don't we?
We're going to switch seats.
Sorry. We'll have a musical.
Don't forget your place.
We'll have a musical interlude now. Ed and I will switch. Someone would like to sing a few bars.
Thank you, Susan.
I forgot mine. Thank you, John. Thank you so much. All right, remember that part where I said, "Let me know if I'm doing anything wrong." I meant that.
How are you?
All right, so now, we'll move on to the election of the vice chair. Do we need a motion to, we have one person nominated, Liza O'Reilly. I need a motion to accept the nomination of Liza for the position of vice chair.
I'll make a motion to accept the nomination of Liza as vice chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Ed. And then roll call? So Carrie?
Aye.
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 Aye. Great, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And again, thank you. As Carrie said, your service. And then, now we have the election of our secretary, and we have one nominee, Kay Prashma. Do I have a motion to accept the nomination of Kay Prashma for secretary?
I would make a motion to accept Kay Prashma as our secretary for year 2018-2019.
Thank you. Have a second? Second? Thanks, Carrie. All those in favor, Carrie?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, the ayes have it. Congratulations, Kay. And thank you very much. All right, so the next item on the agenda is item 2.1, to approve minutes of the school committee meeting held April 23rd, 2018.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the school committee meeting held on April 23rd, 2018.
Is there a second? Does anybody have any comments, questions, or a second?
I need a second.
You need a second to approve the minutes.
I'll second, I didn't write them yet.
Oh, that's true. Okay, perfect, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, all right. Approval of minutes done. All right, item three, questions and comments. So audience comments are always welcome as agenda items are discussed, but we do set aside 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting to enable members of the audience who have questions or comments about any matters that are not on the agenda. So if there is anyone in the audience now who would like to speak about something not on the agenda, let me know, and then I can read the rest, but if not, we'll skip the rest, which is the rules of Oregon. Anyone? Okay, great. All right, no questions, comments, so move on to superintendent's report. Thank you, Doug. Hello?
In your packet, there is an email that came to us from Katie Roberts, who's the director of science, and she was announcing to us that one of our physics teachers, Gary Forrester, has been selected for an award as local phys tech teacher of the year for 2018, and that is representing his institution, which is University of Mass of Dartmouth. We will receive a formal letter, which I'll share with you and also with the press later on, but certainly congratulations to Gary, physics teacher at Hingham High School. Secondly, I would like to introduce our new principal of Foster School, all signed on board and excited to go, and we announced her selection a number of weeks ago now, and at that time, I gave you a copy of some information about her. That was in your packet, but Dr. Elizabeth Wilcox is here this evening. Beth. So Beth will come aboard formally as of July 1, and Debbie will be transitioning out at that point. In the meantime, Beth has indicated a willingness, which we're all excited about, for her to attend some of the end of the year things at the school, and also to be able to participate in the hiring interviews that will happen at Foster School. And then she and Debbie, between them, will find some other ways to get together as a transition. I always comment that in this case, we have a very capable assistant principal in Jen Newell, and so between the excitement that we have for Beth and the hard work and the collaborative nature of Jen, I think it's going to be a really smooth transition, and at this point, Josh, another Foster School, parents can rest easy that things are in good order. So thank you very much for coming, Beth.
Thank you for having me. I'm very excited to be part of the Hingham community, and I appreciate you having me here tonight, and I look forward to working with the families of Hingham and the students of Hingham.
Thanks so much, welcome.
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 I want to just comment on our rather quickly put-together effort to be part of the Massachusetts Leads the Nation celebration that's going on all this year, and it's really a celebration for two reasons. First of all, this is the 25th year of education reform, and so Massachusetts is celebrating that journey that brought changes to how school systems were structured, and how hiring was done, and principals appointed, and all those kinds of things. And in addition to celebrating that transition, which I would say has been very successful in so many ways, quite, not quite perhaps measuring up in the area of funding, there were some significant changes to funding in 1993, the creation of the foundation budget, and differentiated rates for different categories of students to reflect the costs being different for different categories, and those were funded rather well in the first few years of ed reform, and every district enjoyed getting more dollars each year. Most of us in education in this state, and particularly here in Hingham, feel that the level of funding under the foundation budget is not now what we need. It's not adequate to do all the things that we need to do, and we all have been pushing for that to change and increase, and for the many recommendations of a commission that was put together in 2015 to change the formula, to make it more responsive to real costs and real needs, haven't yet been fully met, and we continue to work and hope for that. But with that exception, changes in standards and having common standards and changes in assessment practices now, up to and including the online testing, there have been a lot of wonderful things that have happened. At times, we have felt, we being educators again, that there were too many changes being contemplated and implemented at the same time, making it very challenging, but that was never about the changes themselves, it was simply about the rate of implementation. So we're excited about that. The other part of it is that over the last couple of years, Massachusetts has been recognized as the number one state in the nation in terms of academics and performance, and I sent an email just recently about that. Some of the things that they point to are being number one in math and science over the last 12 years on the MCAS, so that's obviously a local state award, being number one internationally in terms of performance on the PISA, PISA International Testing, and number one in the country in terms of performance on AP exams, the actual average scores. So the state also cites increases since ed reform, consistent growth every year in graduation rate, and also in the corresponding decline in dropout rates. So those are all the kinds of things that Massachusetts has cited, and months ago, the state came out with its own plan for how to celebrate this kind of a double event, the birthday of ed reform and also the academic progress. And so about a week and a half ago now, we were invited by the state to all cities and towns to also participate. We didn't think it gave us an awful lot of time to get ready, because we had all kinds of creative ideas about what kinds of things we would celebrate, but when the leadership team got together, we were pretty clear in the fact that we see education as being much broader than simply the test scores, however important they are, and they are important, and so that we would choose to celebrate things that we think in Hingham reflect our mission, reflect who we are and what we value, and that we would do something, some sort of a PSA, Public Service Announcement, every day this week. But now making that happen at a very busy time of the year was not that easy, so I called on my friends at the Alltown PTO, and Josh is on the Alltown, Carrie's been on the Alltown, and he was in this, there's only two in this room. So actually then, they stepped forward and said, "Well, we'll cover some days for you." And then the building principals would cover the other days. So I just put over there what has come in today. So the way it was to work is that I would write an X2 message, which I sent out last night, and also sending to the paper, to the journal, this week, and talk a little bit about the history of why we're celebrating this year in Massachusetts. And then today was a building day, so today the principals were all supposed to send in their PSA. Josh is the, do you call it the author or the designer?
Designer.
Of the logo?
I didn't read a word.
That he created for us last week, and so everybody's PSA was supposed to have the logo on it, and I've got four of the six that were going out today from the schools, so there are two that aren't up there yet, but will be. And then the Alltown group decided among their membership what focus their three messages would have, and those messages will go out on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and I'll send those via the X2 message. So the three topics, so the three themes that they chose were SNAP, we think that's our unique program, and lots of benefits to both the students who participate, but also the mentors that participate, the high school mentors. And the next one was Metco. Metco in Hingham is opening its 50th anniversary. That one's not up there yet, but will be. And then the third one that is a joint message is our relationship with veterans in Hingham. We do a lot of celebrations at the elementary school, children participate in Memorial Day and Veterans Day. We have our 11th graders spend a whole day at GAR Hall every year and learning wonderful life lessons from some of the veterans that are involved, and as some of you heard at town meeting, Representative Lynch addressed the town meeting and made a comment that stuck in people's minds, and that was that among his 22 towns and his four cities, I think it is, that Hingham had the highest rate of acceptances at military academies, and read off all the young men that currently, and women, I'm not sure we've had any women, but young men, that have been accepted and attended the different military academies. So it was kind of new in everyone's mind, and that's what motivated that one. So this is our effort this year for Massachusetts is leading the nation, and our theme is that Hingham helps Massachusetts to lead the nation, and does it in many ways beyond the academic and testing measures. So just wanted to share that with you. You have there the sheet of kind of notes that we talked about at the administrative team, the leadership team, last week, and we talked about some of these things as well of Alltown. So good effort, I think, on the part of my team, and special thanks to Alltown for making it happen. And I was just talking to Josh about, is there some way we can kind of memorialize these things when they're all in, because there's going to be a bunch of them, and put them into a booklet or a pamphlet or something and send them off to Department of Ed, as this is what we did.
Great, thank you.
The monthly maintenance update from Doug and Katie is included, that's regular for those new folks.
Dr. Gallo, may I make a comment?
Sure.
On that, for the advisory committee members in the audience and at home, in the facilities report, if you can see it, our school department now has a new working relationship with the DPW for large-scale tree work, so that we are, so it formed a partnership to accomplish that work instead of hiring an outside vendor to lower costs and create more synergy of town departments, which I know is something that we get asked every meeting practically of where can you find new synergies? So just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that, and I was pleasantly surprised to see that they were taking that initiative, so. Thank you, John, please pass that on to the staff.
And actually, sorry, if I can also add to that, the first time that I saw the synergies in action was the Senior Service Day, Harborman Helping Hingham, which is the senior class goes out and does community service. The Katie and Doug were able to get the DPW involved, and they brought over a big trailer that we were able to use to clean out the senior night storage area, and a group of students came, funny little story, they came and they had choices, they weren't, they were assigned different roles, and some kids could be teacher assistants for the day, some kids could go work at the Historical Society. So the group of kids that the PTO led walked into the depot and went, "Wait, how do we get this job?" So I was like, "Well, sorry, but you're here now, so let's get to it." But anyway, the DPW was fantastic in taking a bunch of stuff away for us, so that was really helpful.
Great. Thank you.
That was from the garage bays?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yes. It's much nearer now.
Yeah, it is much nearer.
So anyway, sorry. So thank you to them publicly. Is that it, facilities report?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, communications?
I did receive a note this morning, I think I forwarded it all to you, is a note from Nicole Piantis. Nicole, of course, is a special education teacher at the high school, but she's also the advisor of the student council. And Nicole had heard about the discussion about the attempt at a joint resolution at a prior school committee meeting, so she wrote some comments and suggestions about that. I have copies over here that, if you didn't print yours out, but I did send along this morning, and it's not the, it's not the resolution that is on the agenda for your consideration tonight, but there are comments relative to the earlier version, and earlier version Also in your packet, it's odd, last Monday night, we had orientation for the new members of the school committee, and we always give out information about open meeting law and about ethics and all of those kinds of things, and the town department heads, and John and I usually attend these meetings for the school department, meet once a month at Town Hall. So that's the fire chief and the police chief and the head of the library and the heads of different departments in this building, and we had a workshop that we didn't know about until we got there, and it was a workshop that was put on by the towns council, John Coughlin, and it happened to be on the topic of ethics, and so I put it in your packet because it was relevant to recent description. It's this thing here, and particularly he did it because many of the boards and committees have new members with the election season, but I thought someone would see this and say, "Oh, they must have forgotten to give it to us on Monday night." But no, we just got it on Thursday, and this is it, and it's just FYI. And great that the town every year does a couple of these workshops, particularly for the elected and the appointed board and committee members. And I think that's it for my part of the communications.
Okay. Great, thank you, Dr. Gallo. 5.2, student communications. Hingham High School student, school committee representative, Emma Quilty, will give us her report.
To start off with very sad news, as Ed mentioned, our community lost an important member Saturday night. Andrew War, War, I cannot pronounce his name, excuse me. A courageous young teenager had been fighting a kidney disease for many years, and unfortunately, after many surgeries, this one took his life. He was an inspiration to everyone who knew him, and our school mourns his loss. This morning at 8:00 AM, we had a moment of silence. Also, the students and faculty were given additional support in the counseling office. Tomorrow, we have a bus for any students that want to attend the ceremony at the temple across from the middle school. The service starts at 11:00, but the bus will leave an hour prior. Today was an extremely sad day at Hingham High School, and tomorrow will bring the same. However, the love and support for the family illustrates the strength and sympathy our community has in time of hardship. On happier side, junior prom is this Friday at 7:00 at the South Shore Country Club. Additionally, tomorrow night, May 8th, there's an amazing opportunity to attend a meaningful play entitled Mr. Joy. It is a story of class, race, and learning to dream again. This will play at Cituita High School at 7:00 PM, and it will be free admission, but you can find a link, I know on Facebook, that you can RSVP. On May 16th, the Global Citizenship Certificate Program will have their symposium at the high school. There will be several, there will be several different projects relating to a global issue or culture that students from our school studied, experienced, or observed. And lastly, last week, the student council had their elections. The new exec board is as follows. Kara Wilson is the secretary. Kat Heffernan is the treasurer. Elizabeth Hennessy is the historian. Sam Hussey is the junior exec, one of the five boys part of the club. Caroline Johannes is vice president, and Abby Finelli is the president. I hope everyone is enjoying the warm weather and continues to enjoy it, and congratulations on the new members of the school committee.
Thank you, Emma.
Thank you.
All right. Five point three, other communications. Couple of items in your packets, one of them being school committee subcommittee assignment process and timeline. So you guys can, you guys have read it, but every, what happens is the new members, subcommittee and liaison assignments are decided by the chair. So you'll send to, there'll be a list of committee and liaison assignments in your packet, and you just let me know by Friday, May 11th, if you can, what you're interested in, what committees and liaison offices you're willing to, or interested in serving on. And then I guess I will decide what those will be, and then we'll convene at the next meeting, and we'll let everybody know what the assignments are. All right?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are the committees the same as the ones that were before?
Yes.
Or have they changed at all?
Yep, they're the same. Same, yep, so same ones, yes. So let me know what you're thinking, and that would be wonderful. Thank you.
It's really important that you get those choices to us so that we can get them to Michelle by the 11th to allow for her to make her choices and have those on them.
And they could come directly to me. They can come directly to me as well, right? Could people just let me know?
Oh, sure.
Okay, all right. Yeah, if you want to let me know, and then I'll just keep you informed as they come about. Okay, great, thank you. And then also note in your packet, the Sentry Club dinner invitation. And a little plug for that, because I know it's one of those things that happens at Hingham High School, and people are like, what is that Sentry Club? But it's really, I think, unique to, I don't know if it's unique to Hingham High School, but it's just, it's a wonderful program. Basically, it recognizes the top 25 students in each grade for, at their unweighted GPA. So at the high school, there's weighted and unweighted GPAs, and so these are the top 25 kids with the highest GPAs in each class. So it's a great way to recognize the students who work very, very hard. And so that's a great event, and it is May 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00. But note that they'd like RSVPs for head count by May 18th. If folks can let them know, and if everyone could be there, that would be great. All right, moving on to item 6.1, to receive a revised draft resolution on school safety and act as appropriate. So that is included in the packet. There's also a few copies of the proposed resolution on the table next to that little stand, if anybody in the audience would like to get a copy. So just by quick way of background, this was, Carlos, Carlos De Silva had mentioned an idea a few meetings ago after the, yet again, tragic mass shooting at Parkland, Florida. So he had suggested that we come up with a resolution. So myself and Carlos and Ed agreed to draft something. We met with Emma Quilty, our student representative, and discussed some wording, what we would like to see in it. We brought the draft to this committee, to the school committee, for discussion. We had very robust discussion on it. At the end of that discussion, Kay Proshma and I agreed with Carlos and Ed's approval that Kay and I would meet to talk and go through and come up with some revisions to the proposed resolution. And Kay and I did that. We met with Chief Olson, got some input from other folks. So we crafted a new draft resolution, which is on the table tonight for discussion and potential vote. So Carlos, since you were spearheading this from the get-go, do you want to read it? Do you want to highlight anything? Do you want to, what do you think?
Yeah, so, so this includes all the edits, you know, proposed at the last meeting. Since we left that you would meet with Kay, I'm not sure if there's still any objection to anything that we have in front of us. So if there is any objection, I perhaps just would like to hear them first, and then I can read the resolution, the draft resolution that we have. Does anyone have anything against what we have right now?
So. I think, Carlos, I mean, Carlos, I'm not in agreement right now with the way it's written, but I would like to get the input from the other colleagues so that, because we haven't really had a chance to discuss this, and since I worked on this with you, I think it would be more valuable to hear the criticism from the other members first.
That's exactly what I'm asking. So take a minute to look at it. This was forward to everyone. If you have any other suggestion, especially the two new members, let us know.
Well, I think it reads really well, and I think it's important that we kind of support our students.
So let me go ahead and read this.
Okay. Carlos, before, Ed, you shared the other document. Can you, I'm just, I wanted to know why you shared that just before. I personally don't have any problem with this, but I'm just curious as to why Ed shared the other letter, that Boston Globe advertisement.
Well, a background, when we originally received the email from Dover Sherburne with their original proposal, Liza asked me to, when I called her and shared some concerns that I had, asked me if I would follow through. Was really not able to connect with the two people at Dover Sherburne, Dover Sherburne, two people on two occasions. And in the course of reading, I came across this open letter that was published in the Globe, and I just felt that it embodied my feelings. And that's why I originally sent it to Michelle and Carlos. They acknowledged getting it and attempting to introduce, attempting to plagiarize, my word, some of the thoughts. But I just thought it captured my, it captures my feelings. How's that?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we did, indeed. I mean, you know, obviously, it's not word for word, but we capitalized on that. One of the items that, you know, members felt had a little uncomfortable in mention, it's the war against violence, and it's actually here on this open letter. But since we heard loud and clear our fellow members of the committee, we kept that out. So, but yes, that was incorporated into this. Thank you, Dr. Ed. So let's read this. And some changes that took place, because obviously, originally, we had hoped to be issuing a joint resolution with the superintendent, the student body. But because some of the members of this body raised some question as that we, as a school committee, are the one authorized to issue resolutions, not the others. What we will be doing tonight, once I read the resolution, we will take a vote. And once it is accepted to the record, our goal, I have already discussed this with Michelle right before we came to this meeting, and our goal is to forward this to the student body. They will, you know, I'm not sure if they will propose anything else, but they perhaps will join our resolution. We hope that Dr. Gallo will do the same. And perhaps, perhaps we can also forward this to our board of selectmen and the town administrator to see if they would be willing to join us on this resolution. Because obviously, after all, it is our aldores as elected officials to make sure that we keep our students safe. So perhaps the other officials would like to join us as well. So we will offer everyone an opportunity. If that takes place, then perhaps we can collectively issue a press release and make this a little, you know, would be much stronger statement. So with that, it's a resolution of the Hingham School Committee on School Safety and Security. Whereas, we were deeply troubled by the February 14, 2018, shooting at the Medjory Stonemam Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida, that killed 14 students and three adults. And equally troubled by previous mass shooting, mass school shootings, including Columbine High School in Colorado, where 12 students and one adult were killed, and Sandy Hook Elementary School in Connecticut, where 20 students and six adults were killed. And whereas, we recognize that ensuring public safety and the safety of students and school personnel requires coordinated efforts among law enforcement, public health officials, social service agencies, families, school personnel, and community leaders. Whereas, we believe that reasonable and practical national, state, and local policies and laws must be in place to reduce the threat of violence and reduce the use of all weapons, including firearms, in schools and other public venues. And whereas, a safe school environment that ensures both the physical and emotional safety of students and staff creates the conditions necessary to foster academic achievement and reduce student anxiety. And whereas, the impact of the school committee student representative report on the collective voices and actions of students in response to the threat of violence in schools has inspired us to demand action. Therefore, be resolved that the Hingham School Committee, one, continues to prioritize school safety and security, educator and staff professional development, mental health supports, and connection and communication with students and families. Two, call upon members of the United States Congress and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Legislature to take action to address public safety, including the safety of students and school system employees, by supporting and funding enhancements to school safety infrastructure, advancing mental health supports, and enforcing, and as necessary, enhancing legislation to reduce firearm violence in our schools and public venues. And three, joins the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education in opposing the army of educators in our public schools. Adopted this seventh day of May, 2018, and I'll make the motion that we vote to accept this resolution.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I can do.
You have a second? All right, so we can vote if there's no, do we have more discussion? Do we need more discussion?
Well, I would like to have a little bit of a discussion.
Yes, no, go ahead, sorry.
I know we tried to come up with something that we can compromise on as a board, and I'm still not 100% with this resolution, and you know that. And I've already told you some of my objections, and I think part of it is we're trying to reach out to too large of an audience. And, and I think, before I even go into it, I really think it's important that everyone understands that everyone in this room is for school safety. I don't think any one of us is not for school safety. It's important to all of us. All of our kids go to schools. It's important that the teachers feel safe and can teach the way they want to teach. But I feel as a school committee member, I think we can be more effective as a board for our own schools, our own students, our own teachers by keeping this local. So that was kind of my first object, objection. Secondly, I think we, as a board, also need to, and I had said this in the past meetings, reflect on what kind of resolutions we're passing. I understand this is a sensitive topic, but I do think maybe whoever's chair's policy could, in the future, discuss this as members. Is this something that we want to, you know, maybe come up with some kind of guideline that will help members be guided on resolutions and the board be guided on what kind of resolutions we want to pass?
So resolutions in general?
Yes.
Not this one, but okay.
Yes. So this one's stemming internally, but oftentimes, we're also asked by outside organizations to write a resolution. And I think maybe we need to have discussions. Do we need some kind of policy so we have some guidance on what kind of resolutions we want to be passing?
Okay, fair.
Because I do feel some of this is out of the purview of the school committee. Secondly, I feel that not only could we be more effective if we kept this locally, but I would like to see some more concrete proposals being made. I think this is still a little bit vague. And, I mean, just you and I, meeting with Chief Olson, was eye-opening. Over these past few weeks, I've been doing a lot of research, I've been doing my homework, and there's five areas, I mean, I've been speaking to other school committee members, five areas where I say, oh, my gosh, we could look into this, and maybe tomorrow our schools would be that much, or slightly safer. I'm not saying that all of these ideas we can even pursue, some of them might cost money. For example, I also mentioned to you, I'd like to see us talk to our local legislatures about funding the mandates our schools have, funding some of the programs like Circuit Breaker and Chapter 70, because the schools are under so much pressure financially that those missing funds could be used towards improving school safety. So maybe we can be more specific and ask for our legislatures to make sure that when they do give us mandates, that they're fully funded, and the programs that are currently existing are fully funded. So because of the lack of concrete proposals, I would also like to see us maybe form some kind of subcommittee, or a subcommittee takes this issue up further and looks into some of these ideas that we have come across over the last few weeks, and maybe continue that homework, because I know that there are some areas where we can make things better for our kids and for our teachers. So to me, this is a bit too broad, too vague, and I think we can be effective. And again, it's, I'm just as much for safety as everyone else in this room. I just have a different way of approaching it.
Thanks, that was a fair, yes.
I'd just like to ask you a question. I was looking at my notes, and the first time I started working on this was March 6th. And my question is to Libby and Carrie, do you two feel that you're up to speed on this topic and feel that you're informed and would be able to, be able to vote?
Yes, I've been watching your meetings on this, so.
Libby?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay. That's fine.
All right, no, thank you.
Because this is a topic that we've discussed at, at least three, at least three meetings.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I agree. I appreciate your position, Kay, and your thoughts, too. And I think some, and you're right, I mean, definitely to, I think the purpose of this was a resolution versus any sort of policy or procedures to be in place, but definitely there is more work to be done, right? This resolution doesn't stop school shootings, right? But it, I think, the thought behind it is it gets the conversation going and it gets everyone thinking about safety and security of the schools and the staff and students and the faculty. And it's sort of a first step, but you're right, there is a lot more work that needs to be done on it, and I would agree with that. And maybe we can think about some sort of subcommittee to work on that. And your broader point about resolutions in general, we can certainly, you know, bring that up in policy this year. Any other comments from anyone?
Well, since it was a separate request to us, would we consider removing point three, i.e. arming of educators in public schools and dealing with that individually?
Not at this stage. That's part of it. We wanted to make sure that our teachers are not being forced to carry weapons in the schools.
I, I agree. I don't want to remove that.
I didn't say remove it.
Oh.
Well, what I'm suggesting is taken out of this petition and that be dealt with as a separate. My feeling is that number three, if taken separately, would be unanimous. I'm thinking that if it's, if it's left in there, I have a feeling that this... I'm, I'm thinking that if it's, if it's left in there, I have a feeling that this resolution of the Hingham School Committee on School Safety and Security, um, may not be.
Um, I would, if, if it was taken out, I would propose putting in the exact same language as the resolution that the board approved, because it was...
Correct, but as a separate, as a separate vote.
Uh, to me, I'm endor- for once, I'm endorsing what the board have decided as a body, so, um...
But shouldn't this be taken up by the Teachers Union? I mean, they're really the voice of the teachers.
It should be taken up by everyone. So, I, I, this is, this is my, this is my voice, this is our voice, and everyone else has their voices as well. It's not, to me, it's not one or the other. It's us joining in, um, and making it louder, as opposed to dividing the statement.
Madam, in fairness to time, because we really discussed this a really long time, uh, and, uh, as you mentioned, you can actually, uh, go on, you know, discussing this, the students will take a look at it, and perhaps they will propose different things, and perhaps they want to join us, uh, I'll move that we, uh, for call, for, for vote on this.
Second.
Okay. So, all right, yep, so.
Are you in favor?
Yeah, I'll do, sorry, I'll in favor. So I'll in favor of making a vote.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Nay, on taking a vote?
Yes.
Okay. So, the ayes have it?
So, well, it's six to one?
Well, I think, well...
Six, one.
Sorry, I think Kay was just...
I think I was the only nay.
The nay to, sorry, were you, were you saying nay to voting on it right now, or were you saying nay to the resolution as...
I'm saying nay to the resolution the way it stands.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, that's right, okay. So, it is six yays and one nay, and the resolution passes. All right, awesome. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Kay, for your comments, and they are, you are welcome. Thank you. All right, um, all right. Seven point one, new business, um, to hear a presentation from the advisory committee about the town's proposed financial policy. Um, I know we have several members of our AdCom here, I'm not sure who's going to present, but... Dan is the lucky winner.
That's always a good sign when you're invited to the front of the room and people get up and leave.
I'm sure it was nothing that you said, yeah.
No, and I, and I personally can't imagine why they wouldn't want to stay here, this financial policy outline. Uh, just to put it in the context for you, it's not nearly as boring as an accounting outline, or maybe an actuarial example. Did you say try? Yeah, okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Uh, thank you for the, the chance to come and talk to you about the review that the advisory committee's been doing on the financial policy. As you probably know, or you may not know, every three years, the advisory committee sits back and looks at the financial policy that we have for the town, and takes a look at it and tries to decide whether anything has transpired in the operations of the town or in any other faction that would cause us to rethink some of the policy items that we have. And so, this year, we undertook that triennial review. But it's important to note that it's a policy review, it's not a process review. We're not reviewing procedures, we're talking about policy, what we would like to see the town use as its guidelines. And this is important for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is, the rating agencies rely upon this policy as a measure of our effectiveness in managing our financial affairs as a town. And so, our triple A rating is, you know, not entirely tied to this, but in part and parcel, the execution and following these policy items in, in a consistent manner of long periods of time is important to the financial policy. Now, this year, we had George Dennis and Bob Curley and I, you know, had the auspicious honor of going to some other towns and looking at their financial policies and trying to understand those and compare them to what we do in Hingham. And it was a really interesting, uh, exercise. We found, among other things, that some towns are a very, very different approach. Waymouth, for instance, has a hundred and twenty-three page policy guideline. Ours is nine pages, you know. Waymouth goes into the policy, the procedure, tells you how, how to do the reporting, what kind of information to provide, when to provide, the timeframes, you know, it should be delivered and updated, and that's not what we're trying to do. We're just trying to say, these are the things that are important to us as a financial body looking at the town's operations. So, what I think, uh, what I'd like to do is just review with you the changes that we're suggesting to the policy, as opposed to going through it in nauseam. Uh, but those of you who have nothing else to do with your lives and would like to go through that, you know, we can make an arrangement to, to provide you with that level of information some other time. Wouldn't you like to do that, George?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good, you see? All right. Um, as background, the policy that we have, first of all, works well. You know, there's nothing inherently flawed with the policy that the town uses. Uh, that obviously is, as I said, the rating agency's important, and so, we're not proposing anything dramatically different here. What we are proposing is a few things that would, you know, focus it a little bit differently. Uh, what we're doing is focusing on three things. One, one is, we don't think that the way we're approaching our financial management right now has enough of a long-term perspective. It seems to be management by year to year to year, without sitting back and thinking about how things are evolving over town, in town, over time, and with the pressure points that we have. The second major point is that we have a concern about capital planning, long-term capital planning. As you went to town meeting and heard the Capital Outlay Committee, they present a great, you know, capital review, but the capital assets they're looking at are more like the, a boiler at the high school, or, you know, the, uh, curtain wall at the high school, components of assets that the town has. No one's sitting back saying, we need a new school at this point, we need a new senior center out here, we need a new fire station at this point, and looking at it on the longer term basis. Um, and then lastly, there is, uh, non-excluded debt, which is kind of a technical point, but we, as a town, decided a couple of years ago that any debt that was funded by the operations of the town, that is non-excluded debt, you know, some call it included, you know, but any debt that matures, as that debt service is saved, we'd put it aside in an account. And, so, it hasn't been demonstrated as to where that money goes. We don't, what we're proposing is that it be accounted for in the financial, uh, policy by being, put in the fund balance and that we allocate it for future use, but, and I'll go through that with you in detail. But those are the three major things that we're focusing on. One is a little bit longer term perspective on operations. Two is more intensive capital for major assets, and then the third is the non-excluded debt. I might like to frame my comments in a couple of different ways. One is, tell you the things that the advisory committee has talked about so far. What we're doing, we've talked to the Board of Selectmen, we've talked to the Selectmen individually, we talked to Sue Nickerson, to Jean Montgomery, to Tom Mayo, and we're talking to you tonight, inviting comments on things that people think are important that perhaps we missed, or if you want to weigh in on a point that we're offering for consideration. So I'll go through what the advisory committee has talked about. I'll tell you what things the advisory committee and this Board of Selectmen might differ on, and then I'll tell you about some things that the Board of Selectmen thought, you know, should be added to it, is, uh, you know, we have the, the good benefit of having two of the three members of the Board of Selectmen having been prior AdCom chairpersons, so they understood the context pretty well. Um, first of all, in terms of modifications, one of the things that we talked about, and became very, very important to the advisory committee, was that we first ensure that people of varied economic means can remain a part of our community. We don't want to tax people out of town. This is a diverse economy, a diverse group of people in our community, and would like to see it remain that way. So as an overarching point in the preamble, what we're saying is, let's make sure that we tech about everybody in town and make this an affordable place for them to live. The second is, we talked about the forecast, and the revenue forecast should reflect reasonably anticipated changes in revenue. The forecast has two pieces, it has revenue, where we think the income of the town's going to come from, and then it has the expenses, and we focused on those individually. There's a lot of discussion at the, uh, the advisory committee about looking at the expenses that are included in the forecast, but the forecast is primarily a revenue forecasting tool, and that's the focus that should be included there, and it should be a reasonable expectation, not just taking trend lines from the past, but looking at each line item, you know, the tax revenue, the revenue from other sources, state revenue, reimbursements, et cetera, all ought to be analyzed individually, so that you're sure, that you look forward, you didn't decide to grow it at three percent because it changed at three percent over the last three years. That may be an illusionary level of income, so you want to be focused on that. Second of all, we have a reserve fund included within the operating budget, and that reserve fund covers lots of different things. Uh, you know, it's principally driven in many years by, you know, snowfall and, you know, uh, items like that that are unforeseen, and it runs about seventy-five basis points, so three-quarters of one percent of the total operating budget. And what we suggested is that over time, we look at that, point seven-five percent, maybe that should be a little higher, maybe it should be lower, based on actual experience. And, uh, so that's more of a technical, you know, point. Um, we also talked about fund balance, and fund balance is something that, you know, everybody looks at and says, gee, that's our rainy day fund, it's money that's put aside, it's, uh, we have some unreserved capital there that we could spend on, on certain things. Now, you know, seven or eight years ago, maybe longer, our fund balance is around nine percent. Fund balance now is over twenty-two percent, so everybody looks at it and says, gee, shouldn't you spend the fund balance down? Well, our suggestion is that when we look at fund balance, our goal in the policy right now is to go from a fund balance of sixteen to twenty percent. It's in excess of that now, but before we spend that excess, let's look at where it's going to be a year from now, two years from now, three years from now. So we're not, you know, spending money that we didn't think. It's like taking out a four-year car loan, because your income is high this year and all of a sudden your income's not there next year. So, let's look, not just at this year, but let's look over the next couple of years before spending fund balance. Another point that was important was OPEB, you know, other post-employment benefits, you know, and making sure that, you know, the amount that's put aside for OPEB is measured in two ways. One is, the actuaries do their analysis, and they provide the town with an estimate of what the OPEB charges should be, and what we should put together out of our budget. And they also identify the shortfall, you know, no town, you know, funds a hundred percent of their OPEB long-term liability. In fact, Hingham is, you know, has funded a lot more than a lot of towns, although we're still not comfortable that it's as much as it should be. So to the extent the town has the ability to put aside something extra, in the last couple of years, we've put away two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand extra, over and above the actuarial assumption, we're suggesting we continue to do that, but we're suggesting it be, when available, it doesn't have to happen every year, bless you. It doesn't have to be two-fifty, it could be nothing next year, it could be more the next year, depending on where you are from year to year, but again, looking at it in a longer-term perspective. Uh, the next item we talked about were the capital items, you know, a major capital plan should be developed. Now, what we, you know, and again, this is where we could have gotten into more procedures items and said, we think this person or that group ought to be doing this work and getting it done, and it ought to look like this and have this kind of information over this many years. That's not our job. You know, our job is to raise the flag and say, look, we're not taking a long enough perspective on capital. We need to do that. And it's up to, you know, the town administrator and town financial planners to look at that and to look at a way of doing that. We also talked about, uh, long-term limits on the amount of debt that we borrow, the term of the debt. Now, without getting into a lot of detail, the rating agencies look at the amount of debt we have, and they look at the amount of debt service payments we make in a relationship to the amount of debt that we have. And, without going, again, through the calculation, as long as we don't borrow money for more than twenty years, we'll never run afoul of this, you know, particular metric that the rating agencies use. So what we're suggesting is, we have that as a benchmark. Wherever possible, we're borrowing money, let's not borrow it for more than twenty years, unless we're consciously making that decision, that it has to be for a longer period of time for X reasons. So that's the guideline. None of these guidelines are cast in stone, they're not in granite, but this is what we'd like to, you know, target, and if we have to vary from that for circumstances that we haven't yet identified, then we'll worry about that at that point in time. The, another point as it related to debt was that the ratio of short-term to long-term debt, uh, should reflect the rating agency's guidelines, you know. I mean, a few years ago, when we floated the debt for the junior high school, it was a very, very attractive rate, because we were floating, you know, short-term money, it was twenty-five basis points, around thirty basis points. The long-term rates were, were much higher, you know, I mean, two to three percent, but we elected to finance that, take it out of the short-term, put it into the long-term, you know, you could have let, you could have left it there in a short-term balance, but then you're exposed to where interest rates are moving now, they're moving up. So you have to look at the ratio of short-term to long-term debt, and that's an important thing. The rating agencies can give us some guidance there, so, let's pay attention to what they say before we do anything different. And then, lastly, as relates to debt, this non-excluded debt reserve, and without, as I say, I keep saying I'm going to bore you with this, I know it's fascinating, and you really want to hear all about it, but nonetheless, uh, the non-excluded debt is a very interesting financial tool. If you borrow money for your car loan at home, you have fixed payment every month for forty-eight months. If you have your mortgage loan, it's fixed payment for three-hundred-and-sixty months. Municipal debt doesn't work that way. Municipal debt pays a fixed amount of principal every year, well, period, and the interest rate goes down because you've got less outstanding debt at any given point in time. So you actually have lower debt service payments in each period. And what the non-excluded debt provision does is it says, when we do have that decrease in our debt service, we'll take that delta, that savings, and we'll put it aside in the bank, and we're going to put it into fund balance. We're going to keep track of that within fund balance, and what we're suggesting it be used for is accumulate that money and use it either to service new debt, or keep that money aside and use that to reduce the amount of new debt in the future. So keep track of it. You know, we've been doing this now for two years, but we haven't had a vehicle for saying, where does it go? We're suggesting it be in fund balance, and we're also suggesting that it be reported to the townspeople in the, uh, the ministry, the, uh, advisory committee report to the town at the end of the year, you know, as part of the annual warrant. So again, transparency, how much money is there, what are we going to do with it? We're trying to set some guidelines to do that. Those are the, the points that we, as an advisory committee, had talked about, and didn't seem to get much pushback, if you will, or additional thoughts from the Board of Selectmen. There were, however, two points that we proposed that the Board of Selectmen pushed back on a little, and I have not, frankly, we haven't had the chance to go back to the advisory committee to talk about this. We will on the twenty-second, and then ultimately vote probably in June, you know, but the two points were, one is that the targeted capital amount for the town, every year in the operating budget, we spend so much on capital, and what we're targeted is two to five percent of the town's annual expenditures be employed in the form of payments for different types of capital, the boilers and things like that. Now, frankly, what happens is that number gets pushed around and almost gets sort of the balancing point, you know, we don't have enough money, we, you know, kind of take it out of capital. Capital seems to get shorted, you know, frequently. One of the things that we talked about at the advisory committee level was to say, if we have something like the block wall at the junior high school, which is a warrant item, that should be excluded from the two to five percent. So we have those items that we specifically included in the warrant, and then we have the two to five percent catch-all over here. You know, the Selectmen, on the other hand, said, no, we ought to add them all together, and they ought to be limited to two to five percent. So, we're going to go back and talk about that, and there's some pros and there's some cons within that, but, you know, um, you know, the one thought we had was, that provided a little more latitude for getting more capital deployed in the capital account. The Selectmen, on the other hand, said, gee, we ought to be looking at this holistically and not, you know, playing a game, not a game, but looking at it based on the allocation of where it came from. So, we'll talk more about that. The next item that we talked about, and the advisory committee felt strongly that we have the expense projections for the town, we straight-line the expense projections. We just say, every year, we put the forecast together, and we say the expenses are going to grow at two percent. Now, that's done for a lot of different reasons, but the one thing we know is, they never grow at two percent. The school department's budget has never grown to two percent. Some departments grew this year at eight percent, some departments grew at zero. They vary all over the place, you know. So what we've talked about is the fact that there should be some guidance from the town administrator on how it is that we should be approaching expense projections in the future, and we're suggesting that it have some sort of reflection of experience, and perhaps you have a forecast of revenue, but then maybe we, at the advisory committee level, need to look at expenses a little bit differently. So, that again, is, is kind of an open item for us, but we want to get something that gives us the ability to look at things in a more practical way, and again, on a long-term basis. What are the things that we have today, and what do they look like going forward?
So, sorry, Dan, did the Board of Selectmen comment? Is that one of the two things that the Board of Selectmen?
That's one of the two things.
So what, what was their position?
Uh, what, Selectmen's position...
Are they in favor of keeping at the two percent? Are they in favor of...
Yeah, two percent. Two percent.
Did they say why?
Uh, they suggested a couple of things. One was that this tool, uh, was something that, you know, frankly, if we put in a larger number, then it could have a, you know, negative effect on contract negotiations in the future. You know, if you're, you know, telegraphing to somebody that you have more money put aside for that, then they're going to ask for more money. Uh, they also suggested that the forecast was not a, an expense management tool, but it was, again, more focused on the revenue, you know, and so, they asked us to focus more on the revenue side than on the expense side. They also felt that it was important to let the town administrator have an opportunity to assess what level of expenses he wanted to put in there. You know, two percent is a number that's been used for the last few years, it was Ted's number, and, you know, Tom Mayo may decide, you know, based on other parameters, that he wants to use a different number. So, one of the things we don't want to do is hamstring anybody by saying, you have to use X, you know. The other, uh, point that we had talked about was whether or not you just take a trend line based on historic levels, and if it averaged X, then it ought to be projected at X going forward. If you took a five... If you took a five or a ten-year average mathematically, you might look at it that way. But they pointed out as well that the variability in those percentages can be, you know, quite significant. When the school committee budget, you know, numbers three, four percent, somewhere in that range. But some departments are negative ten to positive fifteen, you know, and they're very, very volatile, you know. So it might be that you want to look at one department differently than another based on, again, you know, from our perspective, based on experience, you know, what is likely to be happening, became an important point. So we'll go back and talk to the advisory committee about that and see what the, see what our colleagues think about, you know, the right way to approach it. The, uh, let's see, there are two points, three points, I'm sorry, the Board of Selectmen brought up that we had not previously thought about. One was that there should be a reasonable effort to identify the cost impact of collective bargaining agreements prior to entering into those agreements. So that in any part of the town where we have a negotiation with a particular union or a body, that we look at the projection of the cost of that contract and then we go back and put that into the forecast and give the negotiating team the ability to understand, if you do this, this is the impact on the budget. And is it sustainable, is it practical? So it was an important point from the selectmen's perspective. Another point that I thought was interesting is we have a five-hundred-thousand-dollar tax, uh, unused tax levy. We could increase the taxes across the town by five-hundred-thousand dollars, you know, unilaterally if we wanted to. That was put in place a few years ago as a measure of, you know, good faith in trying to reduce taxes across the board. A suggestion was made that we think about whether or not, you know, that five-hundred-thousand dollars across the entire town is insignificant to most people in town. But if you had targeted tax relief and you spent that five-hundred-thousand dollars and had targeted tax relief to certain constituencies, you know, that might be a more effective way of, of using that capital. So again, something that we'll take a look at.
Dan, can I ask you a question on the?
Sure.
Unused tax levy?
Yep.
Uh, we have the same tax rate for commercial versus private property.
Right, right.
There's seven-thousand-odd households, taxable households, seventy-two-hundred-ish?
Yep.
Households in Hingham that are, that are taxed.
Yeah.
Does that unused tax levy apply to business owners, business tax basis?
It's across the board.
Across the board?
Yep.
So in point of fact, if you divide five-hundred-thousand by the seven-thousand, I did the number, it's something in the neighborhood of eighty-five dollars per family, it would be less than that, wouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. It's, it's something less than fifty dollars a family.
Fifty.
And, uh, and the point being that they were advancing that, you know, to the average person in town, fifty dollars is not a lot. But to some people, fifty or a hundred dollars is, is an awful lot. So we ought to be sensitive to that, at least in terms of how we think about this. Um, and then last, we talked about, you know, the, uh, the need to be sure that, you know, we socialize this policy and make sure that the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, that, you know, feel, you know, bought into what we're proposing. And if there are things that should be considered, you know, that we would, you know, take that into consideration. What we're trying to do is propose some guidelines as a process, you know, I'm sorry, as a policy that will make us all feel comfortable. Because these are, I don't want to say marching orders, but they're parameters that impact the financial operations of the town. You know, the other end of the building and this end of the building. So we want to be sure that we have the feedback, you know, from, from everybody across the board. And then the last couple of items were, you know, very administrative. One is the, the document itself talks about as town finance director. We don't have one, we have a town administrator, so we changed the word to town administrator. And then in true grammatical fashion, we had a number of edits, commas, cross-tease, you know, paragraph changes and other things that we, we thought were appropriate. So, uh, I know I've rambled on very quickly, but I don't want to, you know, you know, take too much of your time. But that's the sense of what we're trying to accomplish. I don't know whether or not, you know, there are any questions you have or any points that come up right now that are, that are, are vital. We certainly are not going to take this up again until the twenty-second and then we'll vote until June or maybe later if necessary. So we're anxious to get more comments, even if they come offline, you know, about things that we missed, things we should be taking in a different way.
I have several. Um, so under, I can go, do you have it there? I'll just, do you have your, I can go through the list or I can read them off and you'll remember and then I can send it to you. So under financial management, um, section three, um, you talk about financial forecasts.
Mm-hmm.
And you say, the last sentence before you added the paragraph, it says periodic and final forecasts, which are the basis for the advisory committee's budget recommendations. Um, I would suggest that as opposed to periodic, that, um, you set specific times. And in our policy, we say that we have reports quarterly and when required, um, reports. So that if you had periodic and when required, or that if you had, like, quarterly, like, a, like a set schedule, like it.
At, at minimum on a quarterly basis, if not more.
And you can then decide at that time, we don't need a report. But when you say periodic, to me, that's, that could be once, that could be none. So, um, that's something that, from the way we operate, that I would like to see more definitive and then take a pass if you need to take a pass. Um, then, um, my computer's not moving, okay. Um, uh, sorry, the formatting of the PDF is coming out different than it did on my computer. Um, the, oh, when you talk about the historic average, um, where is this, sorry, um.
That's a good question while you're looking if that's okay.
Okay.
Um, one, no, go ahead, do that. Um, one thing that I was thinking of, because you mentioned in the, um, Board of Selectmen had the recommendation to make a reasonable effort to understand collective bargaining impacts. Do they, um, is there a model? I mean, I'd be guessing that there has to be a model out there somewhere that a municipality could use to?
You know, off the top of my head, I don't know, but, you know, certainly, you know, I would imagine there is. You know, if, if not, you know, in developing a contract, you look at the different parameters and say, this is, this is what we have and this is what we don't have. You know, if we have the, if the following components give us a hundred dollars and we change those components, we can figure out whether they give us two-hundred dollars or not. So it's kind of comparing an apples to apples, you know, prior contract, new contract. And I think that's what they're looking for, is to say, all right, then if you've done that and it's still within the parameters of what you expect the growth to be, then you're probably okay. But if it's going to blow up your salary structure, it's going to blow up your expense structure, then you ought to know that upfront and, uh.
Okay, I mean, I would say we do that, so, but.
Mm-hmm.
I guess I would agree with that because we already do it. I don't know what they do on there. So on, I found, um, then in that section three, where you added, um, whenever practical these forecasts should reflect reasonably, the historic rates of increase?
Yep.
Um, I guess I would just want to refine the historic rates of, how are, how are you defining that? Is that a ten-year average, is it a five-year average? Because five years, ten years, that can make a difference of historic rates. So that would be something that I would guess more specific about that. Then in section five, where you added, um, oh, the line you added, if the amount allocated to the reserve fund is consistently inaccurate, the allocation should be adjusted upward or downward in future forecasts and budgets.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I rewrote this.
Mm-hmm.
And to, the reserve fund transfers should be tracked each year to provide historic data to prepare future forecasts and budgets.
Mm-hmm.
Because you just, when I read this as saying, if it's inconsistently accurate, well, what does that really mean? So if you're going back to, with the forecast, you're going to base on historic rates, I'm thinking, well, then this reserve fund transfer decision should also be based on historic rates.
Yeah, well, I think, I think that's the intention. I don't, I could, perhaps it's not worded, you know, precisely that way, but, you know, clearly, you know, Sue Nicholson and Jean Montgomery keep track of that information.
Right, I'm not questioning that they don't, yeah.
No, I know, I know, just, you know, the advisory committee will ask that question as we go through that, how does this compare to what we should be doing?
Yeah.
What we're saying is we ought to be, this is a box to check off, make sure that, you know, just leave the number the same, you know. If there's a, you know, if there's a trend line here, I mean, if our winters get all that much more severe, then we should double the snow budget.
Right, which I agree with, but I'm now also reading this as a policy and that to use consistent terminology of, of how you're executing the policy, I think would be?
Yep.
Helpful. Um, then, oh, um, number eight, when you're talking about long-term financial obligations and liabilities. And then you added that it's consistent with the projection from the most recent actuarial evaluation report plus an appropriate catch-up allowance.
Mm-hmm.
So I read this and this new statement, um, to me is, and, you know, I question, is this an absolute statement? And are you then jeopardizing the delivery of current services? And, you know, I look at the, and if you did OPEB alone, based on the projections of most recent actuarial valuation report plus appropriate catch-up, that could blow the whole budget. And when I read this, there's no flexibility in the way this is worded.
Mary Power brought up the very same point. And what document you're looking here, looking at here, it doesn't reflect any of the changes we made. That, that's a subtle change, but what we're talking about is adding as practical, or where practical.
Okay, that, I would appreciate that, because I was a little like, ah! Then I noted that, um, you, oh, number ten, you had about new spending initiatives. I'm not changing anything, uh, departmental reorganizations, bylaw amendments. Um, this is why we did our five-year financial vision.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So we were delivering on that of helping the town to understand those things. Oh, then on the, number fourteen, the way the unused levy capacity paragraph is written. Um, this is, this is a little, you know, semantics, but you don't want, or you, you want, I rewrote this because, um, you don't want to encourage using the unused levy capacity, correct? Right, so, um, let me see if I can see my comment, here we go, okay. So I moved the sentences around to reword it of saying, the historical practice of the town is to maintain unused levy capacity and a proportionate tax increase. Accordingly, once unused levy capacity is created, it should be maintained in future years, i.e., da-da-da-da-da-da. Then unused levy capacity can be reduced or eliminated in future fiscal years by levying up to the levy limit as defined in Proposition Two and a Half. So that by rewording it, you're putting, the first intention and the first comment is about maintaining the unused levy capacity as opposed to proposing the first part of the paragraph of you can change unused levy capacity. So it's just, um, if that, if that is your intent, I think it would be more clear?
Yep.
To people that that's your intent.
Well, I think that's one of the things we ought to consider within the context of the Selectmen's comment about whether or not, you know, unused levy benefits the entire town to such a diminutive amount that what we really ought to be looking at is targeted tax reductions.
Um, then in, um, okay, then capital, well, you added the section nine about the long-term capital plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would suggest that you move that paragraph to the end after all the paragraphs referring to the capital outlay committee and the capital outlay plan because it's a brand-new thing and you kind of, you stick it in the middle there. But I also, it, I do raise the question when I was reading this is, who's preparing this long-term capital plan? And also, what is a preservation item? That, I did not understand what that term was. It says, a long-term capital plan should focus on capital management and preservation items? Not already included in item A.
It should say capital i, uh, management and preservation, you know. Maybe that item is a straggler, item, word item is a straggler.
All right, um, because, um, you know, we talk, there's so much detail in here about the capital outlay, which is a line item in the budget. And then you pop in this long-term capital, which I get it, but it, it's like, there's no ownership of it, there's?
Well, that's, therein lies, you know, one of the interesting contradictions of this whole policy. You know, and some of the pushback we got was, we shouldn't be setting procedures. You know, that's starting to sound a little bit more like a procedure. You know, you should have a capital plan, you should look at your current assets, you should look at the assets that you have that you're not using, the assets, how do you preserve those assets? The assets you're going to need in the future. And we can alliterate all the different things. And if Doug Foley were here, he'd have a very long list of things that appropriately would be there. But what we're saying is, you know, we should be talking back, if you will, the language so that it says, we need a capital plan, you know. And we're purposely not saying, who develops the capital plan, because that's not our purview. That's up to the town administrator to determine how it gets developed. So what we're just doing is raising the flag and, you know, saying, we really need this. And so, you know, without, you know, being didactic, we're not trying to tell you how to do it, but we are saying, we'd want you to do it, but we'd like to have a ton. So that was not, not unintentional.
Okay, I, I get where you're coming from, I agree the point.
Sure.
Um, I think the terminology might need to be?
Yeah, well, that terminology will be.
Clarified, um, so that everybody understands the difference of, because with capital, you know, we do our five-year plans and.
Right, right.
And I'm also looking at this of, if anyone looks at this, I'm not as invested in you. Okay, then, um, I had a question about, um, with capital and in number ten, um, you know, when can you use a reserve fund transfer for a capital item? And that's not really addressed in here. And I'm thinking of the high school windows, the library roof, I think the library roof is, um. And so then, in the reserve fund section, there's, those two aren't addressed. In those two sections, the concept of using a reserve fund transfer for?
Right.
An unanticipated capital expense. That's an urgent item.
Right.
Um, that may not have shown up on?
Mm-hmm.
The plans.
Mm-hmm.
Then, but we know that we do that. And so that was, um, something that I was concerned about. And then, um, then in the, down the debt service, when you're talking of the non-excluded debt, and you say that, so each year it declines. So from what I understand, with the town or the public debt, the first two years it's interest-only, then it spikes up and then it starts declining, is that correct?
Uh, that, that the town was looking at, Lucy said? No, it, it declines from day one.
You, you have better information than I do.
I just, I remember from the middle school, they.
Well, if you're using short-term debt, you know, it's going to be one level.
Okay.
Because you're not, you're probably not providing any amortization of the principal.
Okay.
You know, so is that right, Charlie?
Well, I, I.
Oh, so that was short-term, okay.
It's just gave me interest, right?
Yeah.
We roll out a larger defined issue for multiple projects, which point we would have the scenario that Dan's talking about.
Okay, all right, so, but it starts at a peak and then it goes down.
Right.
So are you talking about, we're maintaining funds from the peak payment?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
The entire time across?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
It's only for non-excluded debt, not for extenuating, not for big projects.
Right.
Okay.
Just for the debt that's part of the operating budget.
Right, I got that.
Junior high school, for instance, is not included in that.
Yeah, no, yeah, I, I have that. So then, who then, so we, okay, so we collect all this money.
Right.
Who then determines the transfer from this committed account in the general fund? Is it the Board of Selectmen or is it town meeting?
It'll be town meeting, it's part of, it'd be part of the budget, you know, because what we're saying then is you're going to take this amount of money that you have, and again, you know, you're not going to use it for operating costs.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
And it has to be used for capital either in one of two ways, either to reduce the amount that you borrow on a next issue. So if you, rather than borrowing a million dollars, you have the million dollars sitting over here, just take that million dollars. You know, but that would be part of the budget for the town for the year. And if it were to be used as a, to offset some of the payments over time, it'd be done in the same way because that's all part of the town's operating budget that gets approved as part of, uh, warrant, Article Six.
Okay.
Am I, did I get that right, Lucy?
I was just looking to see the numbers as far as the dollar amount.
Yeah, so far it's not, it's a couple hundred thousand.
This year eighteen, it's eighteen, two sixty-seven. For nineteen, the forecast is for it to be a hundred and seven.
Right, but those are already paid off and now were, those were things that were paid off, correct?
That's just, that's just the difference in the debt service, right.
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 They're not paid off completely, but as they, well, as pieces of that larger bond issue get paid off,
Right.
the amount that we are not putting toward paying on that loan
Right.
is being put into the savings account and is put into a committed account at fund balance.
Yeah.
You don't see it in Article Six because it's buried in debt service, but if you look at the detail for Article Six, you look at the specific budget items, you would see that.
Yeah, no, I, I remember it, I know that we've started doing that.
Right.
I was just trying to understand that potentially there's going to be more of this.
Right.
And then, how's it going to work and how's it going to impact the rest of the budget?
Well, that, that was part of the concern of the Advisory Committee, that we have it, we're not really, you know, saying, what, where do we put it? Where do we use it and how do we report on it? And so what we're saying is, put it into fund balance, identify it as a line item in fund balance so we know where it is, and then report on it in the, you know, a report from the Advisory Committee to the town, and then use it for capital, either in form of debt reduction for future debt or, you know, reducing the principal that you borrow on another issue.
The feeling is it won't be there very long because certainly you're going to add to it every year as older debt rolls off, but your likelihood you'd be using it to either finance your debt or to put toward a capital purchase instead of borrowing for that.
Right, right.
So it's kind of going to go like this, depending on the year.
It's kind of like a kid's peggy bank, as soon as they hear a lot in it, they take some out, you know.
Okay, so you're allowing cash reserves to pay instead of a debt of, okay, I get it, all right. That was it, but I read the whole thing, I didn't just read the rest.
That's, I'm impressed, thank you.
Sorry to monopolize the time.
No, 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 that's helpful, it's good input. Anybody else have any thoughts right now? Again, oh, Doc, yes.
You will probably be surprised at what I'm, what I'm going to say. There were a lot of things in here that I liked seeing and I think that they're good additions and changes. I personally like the idea of the targeted tax reduction, I've always felt strongly about that and really make that money mean something to some people when diffusing it is not useful. Differentiating, I hadn't thought of differentiating the capital projects to those that are kind of routine, like replacing air handlers and those kinds of things and those that are really big, big items, asset and facilities items. However, I have always been concerned about the revenue stream. You've all heard me talk about that before and we've made, heard commitments that that is something we need to attack. So, you know, last year we looked at the, the model that you came up for, looking at our big projects out there on the horizon, which I thought was great, but we didn't talk about revenue. So my concern is that we have a revenue bucket in town that's predetermined. I mean, we don't determine it and in most cases you don't because it's part of the forecast, but we have this revenue bucket. And the first thing that happens in Hingham is that we don't fill it up all the way each year because we don't tax the levy. All right, that's a policy decision, that's not my decision, but it does impact how much is in the revenue bucket. And then, about 12 years ago, I think I can remember Laura Burns actually doing a presentation. In one year, we, it was the year we started OPEB and we started pulling out nine hundred-something thousand dollars a year for OPEB out of the operating budget. It was something that had never come out before, so a pretty big hit to, in the same year, we started funding a fairly large amount to capital. Did we need capital? Absolutely. So I'm not opposed to either of those things, funding OPEB or pulling capital out, but it was pulling out an amount of money from the already limited revenues, which support the operating budget. And in the same year, we also pulled out some money for cash reserves. And all those three things happened in a year and that was devastating to the, to the budget. I wasn't opposed to any of them, I simply thought that maybe balance, there could have been more balance, money is available for operating budget and monies for those long-term purposes, all of which are valid things. Then, along came, so, so now we have the not-quite-full bucket and we have the pipes coming out to new uses for what used to be operating money, supporting the town's budgets. But over here, for years, we had no new, new sources of revenue coming in, but all of a sudden, we had new revenues coming in when the meal tax came along. And in fact, over the years, those revenues have been higher than I think anyone anticipated they would be. But we didn't let those go into this bucket. We set them aside for good purposes, and do I oppose any of the good purposes? No, I don't, I again think, could that not have been a balance? So now, the last several years, we've been really talking about this bucket that's not full, this stuff is coming out that never had been intended and, and things that we thought were some hope for revenue never went in. And so, so all of a sudden, I'm concerned as I read a couple of the things here because they suggest to me that we may be putting in place as part of this financial policy, as part of the guidelines, things that might restrict that even more. So, for example, the commitment to take out even more and use catch-up money for OPEB, no. Do we want it to be paid off? Sure, I sure do, I mean, I'm a senior citizen and going to be retiring and, you know, I, that's important to me. But again, I just see either ors as opposed to some balance and moderation. Another one, the idea that, there has, there have been times in the past, in fact, this year, when we looked at that capital amount and said, "Well, we can balance the budget by using some of that." And I know people like to be more rigid than that and so on, that bothers me. And, and when we talk about the, the debt and the, how the, the interest is going down and we set that aside and, okay, I like that as an overall plan, knowing where it is and how much and so on, but then there's a sentence right at the end, "It should not be used for operating expenses," and that seems kind of, you know, dramatic to me and fixed. When, when I think about policy, I think about it as we think of policy, that it's a rule and you have to go by what the rule is and there's no leeway. I hear you talking about the policy, but also talking about its guidelines, and those are a little bit different things. So, you know, I'm not sure whether we all understand the same word. But, so I'm, I'm concerned about any things, it was great we have a policy and we're unique in so many ways here of having organized town and government and talented people working on all of these things. We are very, very fortunate. I'm just concerned about there being more rigidity about this that may limit still the revenue problem that we haven't quite fixed. So, because, because the bucket isn't, isn't full. And I'm not saying that we should fill the bucket, I'm not saying that we shouldn't try to fund OPEB and, and our capital expenses. I'm not saying that we shouldn't be careful with money that we find as, as an increasing pool of money that comes from the, the debt going down. I'm not saying any of those things is wrong, I'm saying, can we think more about flexible situations? So in a given instance, we might make a different decision than what the guideline calls for. And two of these things actually came up this year in the budget as Laura had proposed, excuse me, not Laura, Mary had proposed a budget, a path, I think she called it, to a budget. And there were a couple of things that, that the Advisory Committee didn't, didn't think would be the way to go. And one of them was this idea of using one-time money. Now, I'm a pretty frugal person and I'm not in favor of using one-time money, but I don't define one-time money the same way that, that the, the policy kind of does. And I define, I don't define as one-time money, money that we get in building permits one year that are going to be replaced by tax payments. And I don't call that one-time money. So that was something that came up this year. And then, the other, was the other thing, was one other thing that came up in this year in our, oh, it was the, the item that Eric spoke to at
Using fund balance.
At the town meeting, yeah.
Yep.
The use, use of fund balance, right. So anyway, those are just general kinds of thoughts that really reflect my, my hope that we can do something about the revenue picture. And, and I see this as kind of cementing some, some roots that may have been shot, some noise shot that could have meant
A couple of thoughts, one is that, as I said to, in response, one of Blais' points, this is a work in progress and the rigidity, you know, is perhaps going farther than we should go. And so, we want to introduce guidelines, but recognize that, shall we say, the lane that we're in right now may vary from, you know, period to period. So we want to use this as a guide, not a, you know, an absolute wall. So the rigidity will no doubt be, be modified in that regard. I think the introduction of certain things like OPEB and some of these other, you know, items that hadn't been funded in the past are an unfortunate part of the cost structure that we just hadn't contemplated. And they need to be in some fashion considered, you know, and what we're trying to say is, let's just not ignore them. You know, let's have a policy to try and get things, things done. And I think the third point that I would offer is, we need to use John's thermos, not your thermos, because John's thermos is a lot bigger.
Mine's much skinnier.
And we'll follow your thermos, John, we'll go from there.
So, so Dan, on the thought of, you know, you have all these OPEB things, on a comment from the Board of Selectmen about expense projections and they want guidance from the town administrator, I would appreciate if it's guidance from the town administrator and the superintendent.
Okay.
Because the school department budget is just under fifty percent of the budget. And if the superintendent doesn't have a role at the table of explaining where we are with expenses, then that's gonna, yeah, if, if that's done in advance by those two staff members together, it could help explain, you know, just guide the whole process. But if it's only the town administrator making that decision, I think that would then help address a lot of what Dr. Gallo has been talking about of, we're taking things, we're not taking everything into consideration when we're making decisions, so.
Certainly a very good point, I'll bring that back to the Advisory Committee.
That's all I have, I realize I put my page in.
Oh, as part of your recommendation is to, the town should have a financial director. Are you also recommending how you're going to pay for that financial director?
No, we're not, no, I misspoke then, if that's what you thought I said. We don't have a, the terminology, financial directors included in the current policy. You know, at that point in time when it was done, it was really Ted Alexiades, who was the financial director and town administrator, you know. And because of Ted's background, that seemed to, to fit and that was a good description, you know. That's not what we intended, what we intended was, the town administrator would have oversight of this. And between the town administrator, the town accountant, the town treasurer, you know, they would collectively, you know, you know, manage this process and implement this policy. So we're striking the word town finance director and replacing it with town administrator because the tax, the treasurer and the town accountant work for the town administrator, yeah.
Right, anyone else?
Last thing we're doing is adding expenses.
Not before we add
We need some money.
Yes, I, I will.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. And I, I will make the same offer I made to the Board of Selectmen at the end of my presentation last week. If you ever have free time in your agenda and you want to talk about finance, you know, we're here, we're for it.
You're our man. Thank you, Dan, and thank you, Lucy Hancock, for your comments. Folks at home didn't know who was speaking, it was Lucy Hancock. Thank you, this will be helpful during budget season, which is words that I was not prepared to say when, one meeting after town meeting. But, oh, well, always thinking about it, thank you so much, everyone. All right, that was seven point one, seven point two, to consider approval of the proposed school calendar for 2018, 2019. The first year that my, I said, the first year that my students will, my children will not be part of the Hingham Public School calendar. Knock wood, anyway, I shouldn't jinx him, he hasn't graduated yet. So, all right, so we have a calendar here, it is, we need to vote on it, vote on it tonight?
Yes, and, and that is part of our policy, that we vote at the first, the first meeting, regular meeting in, in May. And also, contractually, we, we have an obligation to share the calendar for comment, not for approval, but for comment with the HEA Union, and we've done that, and there were no comments, suggestions. This is, this is typical in a way as a calendar, but there really aren't any points that sometimes raise issues and sometimes that's around how that holiday break works because of what day the holidays fall on. It's kind of, it's kind of a no-brainer situation this year, and so there's really nothing unusual other than the fact that the Good Friday holiday falls within the vacation period at the, so in a, in a way, it saves us a day. It's a two-for-one, the April vacation and the Good Friday are four days, we're, we know, five. So we, of course, add the release day after the fact, not, there are no changes that we're proposing, but we put together that schedule later this spring as the teachers and Jamie's Committee, Professional Development Committee, give their input as to what kinds of things they would like to see. And we think our plan this year that included having three, three-hour release stays, which allowed us to create some mini-courses that teachers could take, worked very well and we'd be looking to do, do that again. And the faculty seemed to like that, and it allowed them to earn PDPs, Professional Development Points, which they need for relicensure. It allowed to, to earn them in bigger lumps. DESE likes to see that teachers are doing some ongoing things and that, you know, they set a number of ten credits as being a desirable amount on any one topic and that allowed us to accomplish that. So we are certainly looking to consider doing that again, but calendar's pretty, pretty simple. And it would be one hundred eightieth day, if we ever get back to being able to go one hundred eighty days according to the original schedule again. It would be the one hundred eightieth day would be the thirteenth of June, which is pretty early and also allows for a fair number of snow days should we need them.
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed school calendar for 2018, 2019.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the calendar is approved. All right, Section seven point three, to appoint the district's representative to the South Shore Educational Collaborative Board of Directors for 2018, 2019. So it's explained in the packet that do you want to give a little more background? Okay. Do you want to give more background?
Excuse me?
Do you want to give some background as to what the position is, or we've already read it? Do you want to talk a little bit about this position? Or it's already explained to us in here?
I think that.
It's explained.
I mean, if there were questions, I can answer them.
Yeah, that's all right. So does anybody have?
I'll make a motion to appoint Dr. Gallo to, as a member of the Board of the South Shore Educational Collaborative for the fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Second.
Second, okay. All right. Any discussion or questions, or? Nope? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I, would you say that a number of years ago, there were some improprieties in a fairly large collaborative, not in our area at all, that caused some, some new rules to be written and audits done at every one of the collaboratives to make sure that financial things were in order and that all kinds of policy guidelines and procedures and so on were in order. And so that was all done, and out of that came some new things. Like, we had to have a record, the collaborative debt of a formal vote, and it needed to be on a certain date. Now, we could pick what date that was, but a formal vote each year of who the, the board member would be from each of the districts. We had to present some summaries of what happened at board meetings, in particular, summaries that had to do with the financial status of the board and, and the enrollment that could be brought back to the local districts. Prior to that, there was no required communication. An annual report has to be done, and those things have to be brought back. So all of those changes have taken place, and I think they're all for the better. They clearly define things. And so two of them are here tonight. One is this one, which requires a vote, according to the bylaws of the, of the board, which is according to the guidelines prescribed by the state. And the other one is that periodically, and usually after each board meeting, you'll get a small packet that summarizes where we are, so. But those have been in existence maybe about six years now.
Okay.
The South Shore Collaborative is, Educational Collaborative is a wonderful facility. And those of you who haven't been there, you really should. We have, well, year to year, we have children, as students there. And I would, if you have any interest at all, I highly recommend that you reach out and make a field trip.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Dr. Gallo. All right, seven point four. To discuss the appointment of Aileen Kalnem as a temporary advisor to Salary and Negotiations Subcommittee and act as appropriate. Do you want to?
Sure. So Aileen was a member of Salary Negotiations with Carlos and myself. And for your information, last week on May second, Carlos and I met with the bus drivers, and we did come to an agreement with them, and John was with us. And the custodians informed us that their membership ratified their agreement, but we're still waiting on the memorandum of agreement for the custodians and, and the bus drivers. So there's still some follow-up work to be done that we would like to have Aileen available in the event we would need to consult with her. So we're almost done, but just have a few.
Liza, I would just add, we did get one additional communication after the fact from the bus drivers, so we still have an issue to talk about.
Okay.
It may not be in the, it may not be in the form of sit-down negotiations, maybe between me and, and the shop steward.
Okay.
But, so we're, we have a little.
Okay. We're really close.
Not completely done.
Okay.
And as well, we have the, the after-the-fact cleanup of getting all of this documented into final documents. That's been held up in one way because the HEA and the powers are part of the, the Hingham Education Association. They have not had an MTA rep for months. And so we're waiting, cleaning up those final documents and taking the memorandums that we have, the handshakes, and converting them into a contract. And that would be something that, that Aileen, with her legal experience, would be particularly good at, doing that kind of editing.
So we did this with Carol Falvey to help us with the teacher part of the negotiation. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Aileen Kalnem as an advisor to the Salary Negotiations Subcommittee and the School Committee for contract negotiations.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you, Aileen, for agreeing to continue on.
And Aileen did volunteer to, we did check what she said. She would be glad to.
Thank you, Aileen. All right, seven point five. To hear an update on the superintendent search. So Carlos and Liza are handling that as part of salary negotiations, so. Liza, are you gonna do it?
Yeah, I'll take, so everyone received a memo from me. We, for the new members, we did this at the April twenty-third meeting as well because there's so many details, just easier to, to process this way. So for the community, we have begun the superintendent search process. There was a announcement went out to parents. And because our April twenty-third meeting was not televised, it was held at the high school immediately prior to town meeting, and we drafted the press release. I did send the press release to the Hingham Journal. However, it didn't make it into the paper. So I told them I would update it tomorrow morning so that they can get it in for Thursday for the general community. But we did send out a request for proposals. We had identified six firms. We sent them to five of them because one did not respond. And in your packet, tonight, I updated the chart because we have an additional firm who contacted me. It's a Hingham resident that owns the firm, who wants to submit a proposal. So you all have that updated information. I figured, why not, with something else to compare to? And so, so far, we, I have received one proposal. I have not looked at it yet. I had a follow-up phone call from the Collins Center at UMass Boston. They had a couple of questions. They do plan to send in a proposal. So by the time, it's time to review them, we should have several to look at. So the deadline for sending those proposals is this Friday, the eleventh. When I contacted MASC, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, who is another firm that would be sending a proposal, I, I called all of them to confirm their contact information. The executive director, Glenn Kuchar, did send some background information about searches. They provide this to all school committee mem, all school committees, whether you hire them for additional consulting services or not. And so you all got in your packet the generic decision tree handout. And Glenn offered to come down to, present at a school committee meeting a general overview of the superintendent search process. And he offered to do that for, he'd be available May twenty-first or June fourth. And so when we take, when I take you through all the next steps of things to do, we'll give you our proposal on that. He also offered that, on their website, they have a listing of searches that are going on, whether they're doing the consulting or not. And we could put up a, there's a section for the notice of future searches. So, you know, the job hasn't been posted yet, but people will know that it's coming. So we have the opportunity to do that. And so then on Wednesday, Carlos and I talked at length, and John helped us through this, of talking about the selection process for how are we going to select this consultant. And so the normal process is to form a selection committee that would review the proposals, conduct the interviews, measure the proposals against specific criteria that have been determined in advance before looking at the proposals. And then the committee would deliberate on a recommendation and then put that recommendation back to the full committee. And this is similar to what has been done on big projects when the.
Design selection process, yeah, for designers.
Yeah. And the long-range planning subcommittee served as the selection committee for those types of things. So one of our, what Carlos and I talked about is one of the things we want to put to the full school committee and is for this selection committee of whether it is the Justice Salary Negotiations Subcommittee or if it is open to the full school committee, but that the Salary Negotiations Subcommittee chairs it. The reason for the Salary Negotiations Subcommittee chairing it is to gather all the information, set the agenda, just since we've been doing all the details. And that we would also have it as a subcommittee meeting, so not televised because of the deliberations that are, are needed. And then also set at a time other than our regular Monday scheduled meetings. So that is something that we wanted to talk about tonight. And so, so that's where we are. So if you turn over your page, I can go over our recommendations. Does anybody have questions about all the backup documents that I sent to all of you? I know it was a lot to read, but just before we get into the list of recommendations, okay.
Is this, what's in here? Yes.
Yeah, you have a hard copy in front of you of this memo to, if you want to read along.
Okay.
So on the back of this handout is the list of things, of things we want to ever get input from everybody on. So the first thing is, do, we, Carlos and I talked about, we should think we should post on the MASC website that we have an upcoming superintendent search coming so that people can see it for, you know, over the summer to, so. Do we have consensus on that? Yeah, it is free. Okay. Then, as far as deciding the selection committee, and this is just for reviewing the proposals of the consultants at this point. So we are taking this step by step. So do people have?
Is that, is that clear? Everyone's.
Yes.
But I think that's a good thing to emphasize because I've had a couple of people recently saying, well, what, they're already selecting the committee.
Oh, no, 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 no.
And why weren't we made aware and so on to just emphasize that.
So we have proposals coming in. They do this Friday. By the time we meet on the twenty-first, they all be here, and they'll be sealed. We have an opening day.
Yeah, we haven't.
So we are actually offering to the committee as a whole, whether the, the, the full, the school committee wants to participate in, in opening that or would rather just have the salary negotiation take charge of that and coming back with the recommendation. It's up to you.
What do you, what's your thoughts on it, Carlos? What do you think?
You know, I really, because we want to be as transparent as possible. And we want to sort of like, you know, bring this here. And if the committee decides that you want to see this, you want to do this together, so be it. So I don't have a preference. I want to just make sure that everyone have a fair opportunity to, you know, voice their, their opinion.
And that there is, you know, we also set out, and, and I am welcome to it being the full school committee with the salary negotiations chairing it so that everyone can participate because, you know, we're gonna funnel this down into a selection committee of even funneling the resumes we get, which we have to do. And then I'll come back to the school committee. But to have the school committee involved is as many steps as possible is where I'm thinking. But we are on a bit of a tight time schedule here. Yeah, not too tight, but think about everyone's availability. And if it's the full school committee, if one person can't make it, it's, it's not the end of the world. But so, just so we go over the timing.
And just to clarify, sorry, two people cannot make it, correct? And it would still be, I am just saying because the timeframe is tight, so if we decide that we all want to be involved, but if, if at any given time.
Oh, for, well, it would be a quorum of, if it's the Salary Negotiations Subcommittee.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we'd need.
Sorry, I was thinking if it was the full, full school committee.
The full school committee. You may need four.
Still need the part of.
Okay, okay, all right. Sorry, I was wondering.
I mean, the, the way we have done, like, I believe, Liza's just explaining. We open proposals all the time, and, you know, the long range. And we make, you know, we work together, John, and then we make recommendations, you know, based on the measurement. I mean, this, this, obviously, if, if it is the full school committee, you would have to give us back, you know, you know, your votes of, you know, who you think did better on this or that, and so on and so forth. So obviously, there's more people, there longer may take. But, I mean, you know, the, Glenn is coming on the twenty-first to give a full explanation about the process. And everyone on this table will understand much better how this is gonna go.
Right.
But this is just to get that consultant firm. So it's not.
Yeah. So they also, what we wanted to do is, we'll still keep the May eleventh deadline for receiving the proposals, but no one will look at them. And honestly, I have not opened it. I put it into a Google Drive folder, and I have not looked at it. May twenty-first, we're recommending that Glenn Kuchar would come to that meeting. And then after his presentation on our agenda, we would discuss the evaluation criteria for both the search consultants that we would sort through their proposals and then also the criteria and questions that we would use to interview them. And the interview would be the second step, more in-depth information of, you know, we narrow it down to two or three people to interview. But we would have all of that criteria done in advance of opening up the proposals so that it is, you know, consistent and we're not favoring one over the other by knowing what's in the proposals. So our next meeting, we have a lot of work to do, but you have the draft criteria already. Then we would schedule a meeting to read the proposals, tally them against the criteria, and identify who would be finalists for interviews. And then schedule the interviews, schedule another meeting, and interview the consultants, and then make a recommendation and deliberate. But we would make a recommendation back to the full school committee, but we wouldn't vote, we wouldn't select the consultant until we're on TV and in a public meeting. And I would recommend that only the Salary Negotiations Subcommittee calls the references, just so we don't have too many people calling different people and there's some consistency to checking those references. But that, you know, it's, so that's where we are.
All right. So. And do we need to have a formal vote, or do we just give our preference?
I think we need, well, we need to come to consensus. And, you know, if we take a vote, that's great, that's formal, so.
All right.
So we don't really know, though, who's gonna be on the Salary Negotiations Subcommittee until we make your decision.
Right.
In chat.
Yes. Next meeting on May seventeen.
May, the twenty-first.
May twenty-first, yes. So it's a fair point.
So this is, this is such an important decision. And it's one of the three things that we're, like, under regulations we're supposed to do. I, I, my feeling on it is we should have as many people, this, the. I, my feeling on it is we should have as many people, the full school committee should be involved as much as possible. And it does make sense to have salary negotiations kind of driving it, but I think it's really important that we all be involved in as many steps as we can possibly be.
Yeah. No, I would agree. Anybody have a differing opinion?
I would, I would gently disagree. Not that everyone shouldn't participate, but having been through many of these applications, I, I think a group that's willing to take on the triage, you're going, will find that some of these applications will be inadequate, will be incomplete. I, I think, I think to try a small subcommittee to do the triage, open the envelopes, rate, rate the, rate the consultants, and then come back with a recommendation, that to me is the shortest distance between two points. I, I think at this point, for this part of the search process, if everyone involved is going to be unnecessary at this point in the process.
I'd like to agree with Ed. I don't want to be opening them, all of us, for the first time on camera and spreading them out. Like, I mean, that just, and trying to compare them, compress them.
No, we wouldn't do that.
So, okay, maybe I misunderstood the-
So, we would, after that meeting, whoever's on the selection committee, if that's whoever it would be, would receive the proposals, take them home, can read them. And then when we reconvene in a meeting, then people would have, at home, would have checked the criteria, done their homework. And then at the, the subcommittee-led meeting, we would review all the rankings and tallying in the homework. So we're not going to be talking about the proposals on camera.
We recently went through this with the selecting of someone to come and evaluate the middle school special education programs. And it was actually a much bigger group than this. And it was, it was really helpful to get so many different perspectives with teachers and parents. And I think it's as many voices as you can get in there because people come at this from different angles and have different experiences.
And we're only going to get at this point a maximum of six. We're not getting 20 proposals, but, so, yeah.
So, I mean, I mean, there's no harm in each one of us taking the package home and rating them because you're going to have the sheet.
Yeah.
But then, once you rate it, you bring it back and deliver it to this subcommittee, the salary negotiation, this salary negotiation, you know what I mean? I mean, that's, I think, what Liza said anyway, so regardless, right? Am I right?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's, there's nothing that, it doesn't have to be just the subcommittee or the full school committee. You can have whatever selection committee you'd like. So, I mean, if some want to participate and others don't, that's fine.
Right, that's what I was thinking. If as long as we have four people.
Yeah.
Right.
Which, which is fine.
Yeah.
Because really, you're just going to review the data that comes in from this proposal and you're going to make your evaluations. Then you're all going to get together and you're going to kind of deliberate and you say, hey, these are the three or two or one, these are the two or more that we would like to interview. And then, you know, and then you could open it up at that point for the interview to more of the group if you so desire, you know? This is just the screening process of taking the paper documents that we will receive to determine who is it that we'd like to interview as the search consultant for us.
And I think the interview is going to be more telling.
Yeah.
And that's where we want everyone involved.
Okay. So, I would propose that we go with salary negotiations, lead it open to the full school committee and that at each stage, the full school committee can choose, you choose how you participate, but it is available to everyone to play a role.
Okay, so, just to, before I second your motion, so on the 21st, you bring a package to each one of the committee members, you'll take home, they're rated, and they will by a certain date-
Yeah.
You know, maybe drop it off over here so, so that way we can set up a meeting, the subcommittee?
Yeah.
Perhaps prior, prior to the June, when is the next meeting after that? June 4th?
Yes.
So, so in between June 4th, you know, the, geez, I'm confused. So the next meeting is the 20-
So it's the 21st.
21st. So between the 21st and June 4th, you know, that, by that Friday, all the school committee will deliver it to the office.
No, it has to come, it's just us.
Just, just, sorry.
Yeah.
Just us. Can they do that electronically or just, just a phone?
Yeah, well, we can figure out the process.
So, so-
But-
So why don't we do that? So I'll second that motion.
Okay.
I would add understanding.
Okay.
Just one clarification. I think that, I think on the 21st, so you should, rather than every school committee person go home with a package and then give their data, we should, we should define who the school, because then, you know, you, they're, everybody's going to read the package and then they're going to say, well, maybe I do want to be on this or maybe I don't want to be on this. You should identify who that group is on the 24th first. And then on the 21st, after you identify that, we'll have copies and each one of the search committee, the selection-
No, we just did.
Okay.
Can, can get a package.
We just did. We recommended that this-
Okay. Yeah, the, the, the motion right now is just for the selection committee for the search-
Consultant.
Consultant be the salary negotiations subcommittee open to the full school committee.
What, what does it, what-
Or the school, the salary negotiations subcommittee, yeah, it would be a salary negotiations subcommittee meeting open to the full school committee.
So those who want to participate can be there.
Mm-hmm.
And those who do not-
If you're not available.
If you're not available, you could just not attend. So the s, the salary negotiations subcommittee would be the committee, but it will allow for other members of the school committee to participate if they-
Right. And all the, all the-
When, when would the date be for this meeting?
We don't know-
We don't determine that.
That.
Okay.
So that's what we, that's what the salary, so let's just decide on that, who the committee is first.
But, hold on, John has-
Yeah, all I was asking was that the, you know, the, the paper and the proposals that come in shouldn't go to everybody and then they say, I will be on this or I won't be on this. We should know who's on it and the ones that are on it should be the ones that get the original paper. You know, it just, it just, hey, well, yeah, I know this person, I'm going to be on it now or something, you know, you don't, you want to just avoid that. You just want to have it all upfront if you can.
So, so why don't, so, let's, can we vote on the committee first?
So the proposal for the committee is the two existing members plus the third one to be named, correct?
No, that's, nope. I didn't make that proposal. I just said to the salary negotiations subcommittee, it's up to the chair to appoint the subcommittee.
So today's subcommittee would not be the same subcommittee ne, on, when we-
We don't know who's on the other.
And I think your other meeting too. I think that the other meeting after you read these proposals will be of, on mutual agreement when the, the, the search committee can make it. And it's not supposed to be televised.
Yeah, right, that's, yeah.
We'll get to another room. It can be open if you post it and you can come and you can deliberate, but you can all agree as, you know, what's a good date?
Yeah.
What's a good date?
That's why I'm not committing to it.
It doesn't have to be a defined date right now.
Yeah.
You know, on the 21st, you can define that date. How about if we read this and we get back next Tuesday or, you know?
Right.
We also don't know what the proposals will look like. Some will be in a business envelope and a few pages. Others could be like this because they'll send you samples of what they've done before and not easily copiable if you're looking for everybody.
And part of the reason that I would lean towards the, a full school commit, a full school committee led by salary and negotiations is just to the point that we don't know who is going to be on salary negotiations, negotiation committee yet. So, there could be some new people on there that could use the expertise of more senior members of the committee, you know what I mean? So, that's why I was thinking that I'd lean towards full school committee led by salary negotiations subcommittee. And then if people can't participate, we do have that option because we don't need all seven of us at each juncture.
All right, shall we take a vote?
Yeah, let's take a vote on that.
All right, so, the motion was, and seconded by Carlos, is to-
To-
Full school committee led by salary negotiations subcommittee.
Right.
So, all in favor?
All right.
Right.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Josh, yes.
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
You got a touch of mic. Thank you.
Doesn't matter.
Sure. Joshua Ross, address 125 Wompituck Road. I'll have to disclose, also the president of the Middle School PTO, I don't know. So, it's awesome that you guys are starting the, the process already. I do have a couple of suggestions. Now that the process has started, that you deliver a timeline of what your expectations are. Clearly, you guys are already down that path with the selection committee for the consultant, which clearly is a big task on itself. Also, once you have a timeline, because I'm sure there's some, some sort of date you want to hit before certain times in the school year or whatever, a list of, as we go through the process, the community members that you are looking to involve in this. Clearly, this is going to be just a school committee issue for the consultants, but I'm sure as you go down the process, you're going to want input from the community.
Absolutely.
If you could give, put together a list of who those people you're looking for would be, it doesn't necessarily have to be specific people, but ideally, PTO would be involved, principals would be involved, parents would be involved. So if we can get a list of kind of what you're expecting from those groups in that timeline, that way we can disseminate it. And as Dr. Gallo said, there are people who are already very eager to, to get involved in this process. And I think transparency is probably going to be the utmost importance in this process. So if we can in any way help with that, I think it would be in everyone's best interest.
So I have request of you. Could you provide to us or to the salary negotiations subcommittee, when it gets, all of the contact information for all of the new PTOs or-
Yeah, I think they're, I think they're all finalized. Yeah.
But, already on the, we have to make a separate page on the website.
Mm-hmm.
To talk to our, whoever's community outreach or what. It's like a separate tab just for superintendent search. But under the school committee page, there's already a rough timeline of, for the superintendent search posted on there. And as far as community members to be involved, once we hire the consultant, we will refine how that will all work and then we can announce how that will all happen.
Okay.
So, we have every intention of including as many people as possible as we showed tonight, that we want to get as many people that, at each stage involved. And as far as the timeline of the expectations, that's what we were talking about on this. And so as soon as we know this, we will communicate that out. I just have a question for you. Was, was the X2 communication helpful? We put it on the Facebook page.
Yeah.
We do that, you know, we wanted it in the journal to, we gave it to the Patriot Ledger and the Boston Globe South person. I mean, it's small news, I didn't expect them to cover it, but-
I saw it.
We are going to push it out.
Right.
So, that's our intention to push out as, as best we can.
To your point, Josh, we are going to follow similar procedure that we did in hiring the athletic director where, you know, stakeholders were part of it.
Yeah.
Parents, coaches, you know, and so on. So members of the school committee, been very successful, the same thing happened with the assistant superintendent.
Right.
And lately, I would, the principal at Foster, which was, was very, very effective. So we will follow similar faction. Obviously, we, you know, we wanted to make sure that we capitalize on some, you know, things that we heard. Some people with, with athletic director was not very happy that we had way too many coaches. So things like that we heard before, we will make sure that it doesn't happen again. So we'll have a fair numbers of stakeholders coming into the table and helping us out with this.
Right, and I think it's, it's great. I just think getting that information out as early as possible will help with some of the feedback down the road that I'm sure you're going to get.
That is definitely our intent. And as soon as, and you can share with people, as soon as we have information to provide, we're, it's out there.
Right.
We just don't have any more right now. I wish we did.
And feel free to use us, and I don't necessarily speak for all of us, but I can speak for most of the PTO folks who meet. We are happy to get that out and probably will do so anyway. So if you can get it to us, we can get it to-
Yeah, if you get us the list so we can consolidate all of our media distribution contacts in one place, that would be really helpful.
Right. And I think they're still voting on some of the new folks for next year, so, just as you are.
I can send you the district for all the PTO newsletters because that, that's one way to kind of push it out.
Yeah, yeah, that would be excellent.
Send it straight to the newsletters instead of-
Right, because that way you have six contacts instead of maybe 14.
Yeah.
And those get, those get out regardless of who's in charge.
Yeah, that would be excellent.
Yes.
Okay.
Great.
And if there's other vehicles people know of that we should be distributing to, we just add them to the list and-
I know the middle school has a PTO Facebook page that's, that a lot of people use. I'm, I think the high school has some, something. And then each elementary school has their own as well.
Yeah.
You know, and we're talking possibly next year to using more of a centralized thing like Foster's using. So, yeah.
That's great.
All right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, is, and everybody's good with Glenn Kuchar coming on the 21st?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Will he be doing the pre, a pre-meeting as well or just?
It don't give a good idea.
Yes, so Carrie and Libby, I already had communicated to them when I knew this was a possibility, he's going to do their training before. So we have to figure out the details of that because you want to get dinner break and-
So we might want to include, who?
Yeah, probably.
As part of that.
And for him too, yeah.
Because then the school committee would be next.
So I'll call him tomorrow to follow up on that and we'll get those details taken care of. And, so then, so please, you know, look at that, the guideline document and then look at the evaluation criteria that it provided you today. And, you know, just think about stuff that, those are drafts. So we will, we can review those on the 21st. And then we can also schedule, on the 21st, we can schedule the meeting for the selection committee to do the, or actually, actually, we can start scheduling that. I can do a, we can do that now because we're allowed to communicate, to schedule an agenda. So, we can start looking at dates for, for the full committee on scheduling the, the meeting when we'll go through all the proposals and we can get that on the calendar. So we'll get that done between now and the 21st. So, so, and then are you guys good with trying to target June 18th? We don't have to do it June 18th, but if that's on the schedule-
Targeted for what?
Uh, June 18th to pick the final consultant.
Oh, yeah.
Because that's a televised meeting and then we don't know our July meeting, so, all right.
Yeah. Great. Thank you, everybody. All right, item 7.6 to declare a surplus van 127, do I need to read the whole thing? Do I need to read the whole thing?
I think this is going to be really easy. So we had got a wheelchair being a new one in capital budget this year. So this is the old van that we're trying to dispose of and we think that it has some value, a minimum value of about $1,500. So, I'd like to have that van declared surplus and me authorized to dispose of it to the highest bidder, exclusive of a price. I would want to put the price in because if I couldn't get 1,500, we still want to get to, sort of off the books and whatever funds we would collect would go to the jet- and whatever funds we would collect would go to the general.
So, I'll make a motion to declare a surplus van 127 a 2007 Ford 350 wheelchair van with mileage of 169,645 miles in fair condition, the number shown, and to authorize the Director of Business and Support Services to dispose of the van to the highest bidder and deposit any funds received to the general fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
All right, done. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, item 7.7, to receive notification of the following appointments. Alberta DePisa as van monitor, Eric Silva as custodian at Hingham Middle School and Plymouth River School, and Andrea Atkins as administrative assistant at Central Office. Welcome to all those.
Disclosure, no relation.
I was going to say. Just Eric Silva. 7.8 to sadly, receive the notification of the resignation of Andrew Namici, the Metco Director effective July 30th, 2018. Andrew has been a great, great Metco Director for us, but he's leaving for greener pastures, so we wish him the best of luck. He has been wonderful, we will miss him, but Lincoln Sudbury is.
No, Concord Carolina.
Lucky to have him. 7.9 to receive notification of the resignation for purposes of retirement of Judith Wilson, the health teacher at Hingham Middle School. So, we thank Judith for her service and for, and wish her the best of luck in her retirement. And then item 7.10, to receive notification of the resignation of Kristen Buckley, special ed teacher at Plymouth River, Michelle Garrity, paraprofessional at South School, and Elizabeth Melcher, paraprofessional at Hingham High School as well. So, we also wish them well in their next endeavors. Item number eight, any items not reasonably known 48 hours in advance of the meeting? John has something?
Can I just ask one thing?
Yeah.
So, once Barbara Pie learned that I was having a van declared surplus, she asked me if I could have the 1988 GMC Sierra pickup truck declared surplus. This one here was, that's a truck, it was 1998, it has 115,000 hard miles on it, you know, after 20 years. And this was the truck where the battery was removed, because it was found smoldering in the garage. So, it does not work anymore, and, you know, we want to offload that for salvage. Just put a bid in, someone will pick it up probably for scrap value, and we deposit that money to the general fund as well. So, if you're in a mood to declare another piece of surplus, I'd appreciate a motion to have that piece declared surplus as well.
Barbara just notified John on Friday.
Yeah.
That.
Okay.
She noticed it in the agenda, and she said, hey, could you do this? So, it's a small item, and I would hope that the committee could do that.
I'll make a motion to declare the.
1998 GMC Sierra pickup.
1998 GMC pickup as surplus.
I'll give you this one.
Oh.
I think you have, you have a copy.
Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to declare surplus, a 1998 GMC Sierra pickup truck, and authorize the Director of Business and Support Services to dispose of the vehicle to the highest bidder and deposit funds into the general fund.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
All right, thank you again, John.
Thank you.
If nothing else under 48 hours, we'll move to subcommittee and project reports. I'll start with community outreach.
Okay.
Sorry.
I know I've been watching these videos a lot. So, community outreach, I wanted to mention that Cynthia reached out to me. We did visits to each of the schools. I went to South, Michelle went to a couple of different schools. And East School, it didn't work out. And so, they just reached out to me and asked if a school committee member could go. So, I'm going to go on May 15th if the rest of the school committee is okay with that. I know I'm kind of in transition, whether I'm going to be on community outreach or not, but I'm happy to go and visit East School, just so that we can kind of tie that up. I can let them know what we're working on, introduce the new board, and let me tell them a little bit of the process.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So, also a stacker, who is the firm we're using for our ser, they're doing a survey that just closed at the end of April regarding our kind of digital presence and possible website, communication tools that we use. And they wanted a date to meet with the whole school committee to do a focus group. And I spoken to Jamie and said that we're kind of still in transition. I don't really know who's going to be chairing the community outreach, and I didn't know if all members wanted to be in this focus group. I assume the focus group is more from the viewpoint of a school committee member, even though I don't know how, if we need all seven members on that focus group. So, I thought we could just kind of give this to the community, new community outreach group, if you're okay with that.
Well, we might be able to tie it in with the meetings of the selection committee.
Have them come.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they offered to come during one of our meetings, but these meetings can be quite long, so I didn't want to tag them on to our normal Monday meetings. So, what would you like me to tell them?
Um, do they have a timeframe they want to do it in? Or do we have a timeframe when we want them to get the?
Are they just wanted to try to get us together possible? I guess, maybe, does everyone want to be in this focus group? Or would you prefer to leave it to the subcommittee?
How many sub, how many forums were they ultimately going to do? Because we had a lot of people interested in forums, so another consideration is, if it's a limited number, this would be a subgroup of seven people. Could it be combined with another subgroup so that we're maximizing the number of people that we can get into a forum? Because I think a fair number of people volunteered through the survey or indicated an interest in being.
Yes, there was a large interest, and people wanted to be in these focus groups. And we also received 450 responses, which is another thing. They will be charging us, I think it was an extra 2,000, to analyze all of that data, because originally, the proposal was only for 150 responses, but we got 450 responses. So, obviously, it's going to take them more time to go through all of that data that they collected. I don't know the number, though, of people that signed up or showed interest to be on a focus group, so I don't know how many groups there will be. I can certainly inquire and ask.
I remember there was a list of, and we picked a certain number, so.
I'd have to go back.
It's a, not a dilemma, but it is a hmm. So, it sort of feels like what we're trying to develop is the website and how to communicate with people, which could be very important, particularly as we're going to the superintendent search.
Well, so my point, I think, is, I think they want to interview us as school committee members, because they want to get an idea of how we use the website, maybe for our own function, and how we communicate as school committee members. And I don't know if the new members will be able to offer as much input. Obviously, as a parent or PTO president, you would have a lot of input on that. But I just don't know, do we really need all seven? Do you feel like you would be an effective participant in that focus group as a school committee member?
It'd be helpful to know what they're looking for from, from the school committee?
Mm-hmm. What would they be asking?
Right.
I would leave it, my point is, leave it to community outreach to make, to do an assessment of where are we going with them and how many focus groups, and then figure out, does it make sense for a school committee to show up with other people?
Yeah.
Or like, figure out the cost efficiency of it? And then if they only want to meet with us, that we piggyback it on one of our existing meetings? Because if it's all of us, we have to post it.
Carlos?
Okay, are they, are they intending to meet with us to sort of like, like a strategic planning? Because what I'm thinking is, we are perhaps getting together during the summer for a retreat again with the faculty, right?
Yeah.
And perhaps that would be a great opportunity for them to come in, do a presentation, and then seek input from not only school committee, but also faculty.
If they want the leadership team, yeah.
Perhaps, that would be a great thing, because obviously, faculty may have something to say about the way we're communicating as well. Would that, I think that would add to what we're trying to do.
Well, hopefully, faculty did take the survey. I mean, the survey was an outreach to students, parents, teachers. They wanted to get a across-the-board kind of picture of what people want.
You guys think that would be a good idea?
I'm just trying to be effective with our time.
Would that be, would that be a good idea?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think, you know, communication is going to be key, and I guess this year in particular. And I'm sort of thinking to myself, as much as I would like to give my feedback as a school committee member to the website slash communication developer, I guess it's really more important for people to tell us what they want from a communication perspective versus, I'd like to say, I don't use social media, so let's not go there. But if that's what people are using, probably more important for us to hear what they want, what they feel they need, how they want their communication delivered. So, maybe a little less important to have us, like the whole group be part of the focus group, and maybe just select just the members of the.
I feel that, I agree. I feel that the parents and the teachers, they're more important to get feedback from them, from us.
Agreed.
In the end, you're, they're going to give a report. So, after they do the focus groups and the analysis of the data, one of the deliverables from them is a report. So, they will be giving a report to the school committee and whomever else will be watching or hear or whatever. But in the end, your role, in my mind, your role isn't to contribute to the survey, but to make decisions as to what to do about the results that you get, if anything, or to take action. So.
Could we get some more information about what their plan is with the focus groups? Like, who are they? Are they, are they parents, teachers, and what the, like, what their timeline is for that? Because then we could kind of figure out if we should just, you know, show up at some of these things, if like, if you're a parent or you fall into one of those categories.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how they're going to organize the focus groups, whether they're going to just give a date and anybody shows up, or if they're going to have, they're going to invite people and everyone's assigned to a certain time and to a certain group. I think right now, they want to focus on analyzing the data that they've collected.
Right.
And obviously, in that survey, it said, would you be interested in participating or not?
I was just saying, if we know their plan, then we can make a better decision about.
We should get you a copy, Carrie, of the, there is a contract.
Okay.
And the contract is pretty specific about how many hours for analyzing the data.
Right.
At a certain rate per hour, and how many hours in forums. And that we have flexibility within that to say, well, we don't want you to meet with the school committee, but we do want you to meet with the tech specialist throughout the district. Or we don't want you to meet with them, but we'd rather have you meet with another subgroup. So, the, the way the contract is written is, it's all about hours, and there was an hourly rate for each activity. And the committee put together a combination of those, and that's where the $8,000 bill came from.
So, who's driving this? Is it the community outreach committee, or is it the company?
It was a project of the school committee outreach committee.
Right, I know, but the plans for, like, okay, so we're going to follow these steps and have these forums.
That's being done by stacker.
By stacker. So, it would be good to help, to know what their plan is before we decide, you know, whether we want the full school committee to meet, I would think, yeah.
Well, so Jamie was the one that.
We can give you a copy, too, of the kind of booklet that I think convinced us all that this was a good group to work with, was, was a report. And kind of brief, very colorful, and, and done in a way that the information really just stands out. And that you don't have to read, you know, 29 pages to get one snippet of information. So, I think it would be helpful if you saw that, you have a better sense, and Libby as well.
So, Kay, can you send that to Libby and Carrie, the presentation that they made?
Yeah.
And then they had, so they'd come and made a presentation, presentation to the subcommittee, and then we sort of told them what we were looking for, and then they came back with a plan of, okay, based on what you told us you need and what we do, this is what the plan would be.
Okay.
So, yeah. But if we send that to you, I think we can get there. So, Kay, you need to get back to them about whether or not we want to focus group.
Unfortunately, it was Jamie who spoke to Alexa with stackers. So, he might even have this information, he's just not present today.
Okay.
So, and he's back on the 16th, so I might just connect with him. I can send Alexa an email.
Oh, meantime, we'll get the information we have about the concrete stuff we have, which is the contract, which has things broken down.
And I don't see it as pressing. I think I'll go ahead and give them the okay? Or is that something that we need to vote, that they go ahead and analyze all 450 responses, and then maybe go ahead and start organizing the focus groups? And with the one with the school committee, we can still let them know?
You know, we're in a kind of an awkward position, you know, who don't like to sign a contract with someone and then find that, you know, well, it's going to be more than we thought, not because of anything they did, but although we did try to say, when we do surveys in Hingham, we get good response. And.
They didn't.
I think they, yeah.
This would be difficult for us.
They were very, they were very much.
So, actually, you've got just about three times as many people responding as we had anticipated. So, if we were to say to them at this point, no, we just want your quota surprise for 150, analyze, well, what 150 do you, do you choose? You know? And, and more data is always beneficial in a survey. So, so I certainly think, and I, you know, I think I can speak for Jamie in terms of what he would say about this, that, yeah, we, we need to finish this project. And it is going to be more, and it's more for a good reason. And that is, more people were interested, so that we should go ahead with that. If, as a group, you feel that requires a, you know, group of the whole body, that's fine.
Mm-hmm. All right. So, about follow up.
So, we're, do we need to vote on that? Or are we good with letting them know? Okay. And I will follow up again with Jamie on the 16th about our specific focus group, or maybe we can just.
Yeah, they want more information about.
Okay.
Yeah, all right. And I think if you need to just let them know, too, we're also in transition of.
I have, I can let them know, yeah.
I think one of the functions that they, that they had in mind for the focus groups was that they can break down the data into the categories of people who responded. You know, are you a parent, are you a school committee member, or whatever? And so, it was a way of being able to follow up on the data that they've analyzed for the subgroup. So, for parents, for example, they've got some data about parents, but that focus group would allow them to kind of delve into those questions a bit more, get clarification for data that wouldn't seem to make sense to me, to them. So, that was one of the reasons for just being able to narrow down, drill down a bit more to what the data shows.
Thank you.
And that's all for now.
All right, thank you.
It was enough?
It's a lot.
Sorry?
No, no, it's good, it's a lot. Like you said, communication's going to be key, so that's good stuff. All right, special education license, do you want to?
Yeah, we don't have much. There's going to be a CPAC meeting on Wednesday to meet the new officers, but that's been postponed until May 16th. And so, CPAC has new officers, so then, once the new sped subcommittee is formed, one of their first tasks would be to meet with the new board.
They just today scheduled a meeting for the 16th.
Right. It was supposed to be the night, they were supposed to be the ninth, and they moved it to the 16th. And salary negotiations, we always already gave the update on that.
Did you have anything for the seller?
While you had the special ad, I know we are a little bit off, out of order, but I think it is imperative. Could you, Dr. Gallo, just give us an update on, you know, so viewers at home, know where we are with the Director of Student Service?
Sure.
Please, thank you.
Yes, so we are down to the final step. We, a subcommittee of the screening committee led by Jamie went to Brookline. went to Brookline and to Cambridge, um, home districts of the two, of the two finalists and had great visits as those things normally go anyway. Very positive in both cases. So both of the finalists will be here, um, on the.
17th.
17th, yeah. In a staggered, in a staggered way, much like what happened at Foster School, for example. So, uh, they will both start here, 45 minutes apart with kind of a coffee hour. You all should have received an invitation to that. And then one will finish the coffee hour and go off in a direction with one of her administrators. And then the other one will come for the coffee hour and go in the opposite direction so they don't meet up in the tour and have a, a tour of the six schools. At the schools, of course, they will be able to meet the, uh, the principals and system principals and. Um, and then they will later in the afternoon end up at the, at the middle school. They'll have a meeting with the other district-wide administrators. There'll be a, a meeting with, um, members of the, and this will have to happen in an after-school window. I think you, you got in, in the invitation that was the, the schedule. And then there'll be a, a meeting with, uh, members of the special ed staff, which will, they will have to come from other buildings. These are obviously optional meetings. And they, there will be, and it will take them each to dinner, um, different places, I'm assuming. But, um, then in the evening, there will be public interviews. And, um, anyone is invited to come to those. They'll be at the middle school. And then once that step is completed, um, again, staggered, there will be a time for people who want to remain and, and debrief with me, give me thoughts. And once we have that data, that's the last step. Then we'll sit down and, um, here, we, our role is to make a recommendation to you. This is a vote of the, uh, school committee. And we hope to have a recommendation to you for the, um, hope to have it for the 21st, but we'll see how that, that goes because Jamie is away till the 16th. I am getting concerned that we're piling up a lot of things for the next few school committee meetings through the end of June. And so we've got to be careful about that because there will be some normal business that needs to come along as well, you know, day-to-day business. But, you know, we're, uh, we're gonna be on target, I think, for, um, getting someone in place with plenty of time to have a transition, uh, period with this. So that's a good thing. I think people are excited about the two finalists. They're both very different in terms of their background, but, um, very articulate and with a lot of, a lot of experience, so they're coming to the end.
And on, um, just want to report on the, as a liaison to the state legislators, you know, we did, I did reach out to Patrick O'Conne. I think I already reported, but I wanted to just say again, uh, at the point where, uh, State Senator Sonia Diaz was looking for other members of the Senate to become part of, of cosign us to the foundation budget reveal reform, and Patrick signed on to it. And, uh, I think I already reported that, but that's part of, you know, us lobbying for more money to our schools. They are, they are doing something to improve that, but, I mean, you know, um, it's not final yet.
Great, thank you. Thank you for doing that. Ed, do you have anything for long-range planning?
Um, no, we haven't had any meetings, but just a quick, a quick thank you. When, when the name Barbara Pie popped up about, uh, deep-sixing a vehicle, I have to thank both John and Barbara. A quick flashback, a year ago in April of 2017, Election Day at the middle school, there was a, uh, a three-ring circus. There was a midget league jamboree soccer all morning long. And there was an out-of-district, uh, rehearse, uh, dance recit, dance recital and all at the middle school on Election Day. And, and the traffic at one point was backed up to Queen Anne Corner. I'm happy to report that, uh, John's iron fist and Barbara's acceptance had worked beautifully. I just happened to run into, uh, Police Officer Hendryhan when I voted on, uh, at, at, at Precinct 6. And he, in fact, had the, uh, detailed a year ago. So he knew exactly what I was asking him and he said, piece of cake. So with John, it worked. Thank you.
Well, we have blackouts scheduled for the next five years. There'll always be blackouts for election, you know, no activities. That was, that was, I experienced the same thing you did and it won't happen again.
John is, John is resisting telling you that I must have bugged him half a dozen times on this topic.
And I bugged, um, the middle school staff and Barbara half a dozen times too, so they really. In fact, I said, uh, at the meeting that we had with the moderator on, on the Sunday, the day before, a town meeting, we were all together. And I said, so if there's anyone on that field, this was to Glenn and a couple of other officers, please tell them to leave because they will be there illegally. And sometimes that is what happens. People see an empty field and it looks like a place we can play and they just come. So fortunately, that wasn't necessary. Because that was the first place I went on a election morning, even though I don't vote here, was to see
just to check it out.
if the parking lot was clear or wasn't.
Alright, thank you. Kay, is there anything from policy? I know Cynthia's.
No, we, um, voted on that spurt.
Okay.
So she was able to tie up everything before the party.
Okay, great, thank you. Alright, um, just the next thing will be adjournment, but just quick before that, thank you, everybody, for your time tonight. Thank you, folks at home, for listening. Like I mentioned before, we're all here for the same purpose, so it's gonna be a great year. Looking forward to it. Hope everybody is. And welcome again to Carrie and Libby. Good to have you here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three times.
Thank you. I'm just doing afterthought.
Go ahead, three times. No, loud, no, loud.